We will start the meeting momentarily when my colleagues finish arriving. I apologize, our closed session meeting ran a little bit longer than we expected. That's always a risk with politicians because you know we like to talk a lot. But again, my apologies and we will get started very quickly here. Thanks all for coming. All right, if we may have everybody's attention, I'd like to call the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting to order. If you'd all please rise and join the Boy Scout Troop 321 in the leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. That was very well done. I have to admit, I don't know if anybody else was, I was actually a little confused because we had two U.S. flags here, but theirs was bigger. So theirs was bigger, so that's the one I saluted. Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Chair.
Anything from the dais? Seeing none, Greg, do we have a report from closed session?
There are no reportable items tonight.
Thank you, Greg. Next item is presentations. The first one is actually from the Boy Scout Troop 321 on the services that they provide. So welcome, come on up.
Good evening. My name is David Hill and I'm Scoutmaster Troop 321. I would first like to thank the color guard this evening for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And secondly, I'd like to thank the City Council for this opportunity to introduce your San Carlos scouting PSA organization. So as you can see on the slide in front of you, Troop 321 has been in San Carlos since 1984. We are sponsored by the Lions Club Organization and a scout-led organization serving over 90 youth this year between the ages of 11 and 17 years old. Through our 35-year tenure, we have impacted the lives of over 2,000 scouts and instilled the spirit of scouting through the Scout Law and the Scout Oath which you've just heard. Since inception, we have had 115 Eagle Scouts earn that rank. Each year, Troop 321 logs over 1,000 hours of community service, which include the following: collecting food for the Second Harvest Food Bank, supporting San Carlos Day of Service, San Carlos School District Cleanup, Hometown Days Event Setup and Cleanup, planting flags at the Golden Gate National Cemetery on Memorial Day, as well as coordinating with the San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services and Emergency Preparedness. In addition, those scouts earning the rank of Eagle are also required to complete an Eagle project, often which exceeds 150 hours. Many of these projects are here in San Carlos, supporting our Parks Department and School District. The success of our organization is a function of the strong adult leadership that we have. Our adult leaders provide a safe, structured environment for our scout-led organization. Each adult is trained in youth protection safety, outdoor training, and position-specific training. This training requires several weeks to complete and it's a substantial commitment on behalf of the adults. In addition, we have leaders who have completed additional training in wilderness first aid, hazardous weather, lifeguarding, CPR, and firearms range safety. I would like to recognize several leaders who are here tonight, which include Lee Torno, Addie Rios, Lance Torno, Mark Maxwell, and Casey Enman. Did I get everybody? Oh, and Sharon Penn, there we go, and Andrew Hu. Thank you very much. All of these adults are committed to the Troop 321 in providing our safe organization. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge that for the first time in 100 years, the program is open to both young men and women, who all can experience the ideals of scouting and earn the rank of Eagle. Before leaving you this evening, I want to articulate with our troop's vision, if you mind going to the next slide, is fun with purpose. We are an active outdoor youth organization, you can scroll to the next slide, please, that provide experiences to the scouts that include backpacking, rafting, scuba diving, kayaking, sailing, and canoeing, all within the scout spirit. Last slide, please. I would like to thank you this evening and the City Council for allowing me to introduce you to Troop 321 for this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that great overview, David, and thanks too for all of the folks in the community that helped make scouting what it is, both for Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. You guys do a great job and you set a great example for our young people, which is very, very important these days. So thank you. The next presentation we have is actually of a proclamation recognizing May 19th to 25th as Public Works Week. Do we have Jeff's?
Steve's.
There, Steve, good. I'll be right down there, Steve. Crystal gave me the proclamation, but I've of course left it behind. You have both the honor and the responsibility of leading a very, very important group of people to our community and in our city. And I just want to read a couple of items here from the proclamation tonight before I give it to you. Whereas our outstanding public works team rebuilds, improves, maintains, and protects San Carlos's sewers, storm drains, streets, parks, public buildings, and solid waste collection systems. And whereas San Carlos's public works professionals are unsung heroes of our community because they do their jobs so well, they are generally unrecognized by the public at large. I just personally and on behalf of the council want to thank you and your team for everything that you do. You do a great job and as I said, as you and I have talked about many times, the only time anybody ever notices you is when something horrible goes wrong. But that happens very, very infrequently. So thank you very much. Did you would like to say a few words?
So, Mr. Chair and City Council members, on behalf of all the public works officials, professionals in the city, I would like to thank you for recognizing May 19th through May 25th as Public Works Week. We really do try to work very, very hard to serve our community. So thank you very much.
Okay, next item on our agenda is public comment. This is period of time for people who would like to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda to do so. Anybody who wishes to address an item that is on the agenda, we will provide time for that during that agenda item. In the interest of the fact that we have quite a few speakers on various topics tonight, I am going to ask you to be pretty strict about following the two-minute rule that we have. There's a timer up on the podium that'll not only count down the seconds, but we'll also start flashing colored lights at you as you get close to the end of the two minutes, which is a good reminder. So the first speaker we have for general comments is Elaine Salinger, followed by Mike King. Good evening, Elaine.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and honorable City Council members. It is my belief that the federal government is not where the real work is done that impacts our daily and immediate lives. The federal government really does not create these types of policies and that I believe that the real work is done at the state and city level in places like this. And so I really want to thank you very, very much. I think the work that you do is extremely important. So leading starts with vision and I would like to suggest that you lead with a vision that most people traveling by bike and by public transportation. This vision will reduce our carbon footprint, it will reduce our traffic congestion, so that people will stop asking for another lane on 101, and it will make us healthier. And what is the path to having more people bike and use public transportation? I believe it's having protected, dedicated bike paths along most major transportation corridors and up to transportation hubs. And why do I think this? Well, I think it's because when people feel safe, that they will get on their bikes. And last year's Caltrans District 4 Plan said that 50 to 60% of people said that they would bike if they felt safe. So I think that's really important to take a moment and really absorb that. If you're not a bicyclist, it's hard to fully appreciate how unsafe you feel, or people like me anyway. Maybe if I were 20, I would feel safe, but anyway. So when you talk to builders and city planners, they may say that there's not enough space for a dedicated bike lane, but it is your job to stand up to them and to tell them that it is your city's priority. They may say there's not enough money for dedicated bike lanes, but bike lanes cost a tiny fraction of car lanes and the jewel at the end of the road is 50% less traffic. More fit people, healthier people, happier people, and more local shopping. So I'm specifically asking that you have dedicated continuous bike lanes on major roads or on adjacent roads. So if the bike lane stops and there's nothing there, it's not very helpful. I'm asking that all large building projects include funding for dedicated bike lanes to major transportation hubs. And I'm asking for an ordinance from you so that builders expect this when they start planning. And the third thing is I'm asking that all building projects on major traffic corridors like El Camino include a dedicated bike lane next to their sidewalk in front of the project.
Elaine, could you move to wrapping up, please?
Yes, and in conclusion, I am asking you for the vision to transform how we travel for the health of health and our well-being and for the health and well-being of our planet. Thank you so much for your kind attention.
Thank you, Elaine. Mike King, followed by David Britton.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, council members. I'm here to withdraw my recommendations for a moratorium and based on the fact of rereading the housing plan, you have a good plan and the plan is about 84% already on the way to making the total number. Doubt if you'll make the very low and low numbers, but you may make the moderate numbers and the short of which is the recommendation to do it yourselves, form or consider at least forming a nonprofit housing agency which will get the money and be able to build the units themselves. But I hope you would continue to adopt the policy that this council has had for many years, get the money before you do it. Secondly, that one of the sources of that money are these commercial properties that provide a significant part of the funding for this location, for these locations. Finally, I urge you to revisit the opportunity sites and consider some other sites that are really available to fill the need, first of which would be controversial, though it may be the North Crestview site, which could offer approximately 100 units, the two Holly Street sites north of Murphy, the North Murphy site to Taylor, the South Murphy site to Branston. And finally, the 1,200 and 1,300 block of San Carlos Avenue on that corridor could provide as many as 136 units. But again, keep in mind the urgency to move forward as quickly as possible because it's going to take a couple of years to do this. And the bigger fear is really SB 50 or something like it because it will never go away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. By the way, I forgot to introduce you as former Mayor King, so apologies for that. Next up is David Britton, followed by David Pollak. Good evening, David.
Good evening. Hi, my name is David Britton and I'm here representing a group of San Carlos residents who are part of Citizens Climate Lobby, a non-partisan group lobbying for federal action on climate change. One year ago, the previous city council passed a resolution asking Congress to put a price on carbon emissions based on CCL's proposal of a fee and dividend return to citizens. San Carlos was the first city in San Mateo County to pass such a resolution, but a number of since followed. In January this year, a bill was introduced in Congress that matches the proposal called the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, or HR 763. Jackie Speer is a co-sponsor of this legislation. We're today asking that you consider an updated resolution specifically supporting HR 763. Your support will help emphasize the need for federal action to address climate change. The bill is an effective way of reducing U.S. emissions by 40% over the next 12 years. It will improve health and save lives and deliver a monthly dividend check to help lower middle Americans cope with the cost. It's good for the economy with an estimate of 2.1 million new jobs and importantly, it has bipartisan support, so will be durable as legislation. There's only so much we can do locally to reduce our carbon footprint and prepare for the changes that climate change will bring, such as drought, wildfire, and sea level rise. In parallel to those local efforts, we need urgent national action. Please consider adding your voice by supporting the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. Thank you.
Thank you, David. David Pollak, you're welcome to come up, but before you start talking, in terms of agendizing something, the particular revised resolution that David was just saying, I certainly would support bringing before the council. Is there any other support on the dais for doing that? Or is it something you'd like to think about? It's an agenda-setting question. I believe we are, but Mr. Rubens, am I okay doing agenda-setting at this point?
Well, we do have a place on the agenda to do it if we want to save them and put them all towards the end of the meeting. Isn't that when we normally do it?
I was just trying to be polite because the Speaker specifically asked for it, but...
There's no prohibition on doing it now during public comment. It's just I think we structured the agenda that way, yeah.
Well, is there anybody else whose interest is, since I brought up the issue, or we can discuss it later during agenda-setting?
I'm interested.
All right, that makes two and we'll put it on the agenda for discussion and action. Adam, you're looking a little quizzical. Okay.
Couldn't remember if we had a rule of three or two people.
Change it to two. Good evening, David Pollak. Sorry about the delay.
No worries. I'm glad to see that housing has been on the agenda for the last few council meetings and now I need to ask myself, what happens next? Gleaning from the back and forth that I've heard on the dais among council members and staff, it sounds like availability is clearly a priority and there's, I need to look at the council's strategic plan to better understand what that looks like. Council members have apparently directed staff to look into holding community dialogues around housing along the lines of the wildfire events and the pedestrian planning. Staff is looking into low-hanging fruit to make affordable housing more attractive to developers. Council is, or the city attorney is looking into how to define a moratorium or a slowdown in commercial growth until economic development plans can be revamped. And if I'm not mistaken, I thought I also heard the idea floated of coming up with a strategy for housing availability at all levels. Not quite clear what has happened with that. It's all good stuff, but what I'm not seeing is a clear plan of action around moving ahead in a sort of cohesive, coordinated manner. Maybe there is, but I'm just not seeing it. So it's, let's, it's my hope that we can turn a desire to do the right thing into a plan of action in doing the right thing for housing affordability at all levels. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Next item is council communications and announcements of a brief nature, because there's another section at the end of the agenda where we can go into more depth if necessary.
Yes? Two really fast things. One, at the this month's CCAG meeting, I just, we recognize a couple of San Carlos students for their walk to school posters. One, Parker Evans from Arroyo and Callan Edelman from Arundel, which was great, they were one of a handful from whole county that were awarded that, so congratulations to them. And then just to think about when we get to agenda-setting, they did, we approved at CCAG approximately almost $1.95 million for grants for bike and pedestrian improvements, knowing that we have this plan in place. I just want to make, July 25th is the deadline for the grant proposals for that, so just to make sure, hopefully our timing can meet that since there's money available from the county and CCAG.
Thank you, Adam. Other comments from the dais? Sarah?
I'll just add, since I'm on the Commute.org board, that I wanted to thank our community members for participating in the Bike to Work Day on May 9th. We had an Energizer station here in San Carlos and I hear it was very successful. And I also wanted to let you know that at our last meeting, you guys approved putting my name forward to join the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust and I wanted to let you know that I was appointed and I'm very excited about that. So thank you for your vote.
I believe the traditional response is, may God have mercy on your soul. But congratulations, I'm glad, I'm glad they followed our advice. Ron, Laura? I just have one brief item which I had the pleasure, my first time doing so, because when I was last chair or mayor, we didn't yet have... when I was last chair or mayor, we didn't yet have the Citizens Academy. I got to hand out the awards and talk to the class that recently completed Citizens Academy. And they were, learned a lot, they really loved the program, we got a bunch of really great feedback, very good discussion. I encouraged everybody at the end, as I'll do this now, since the room is sort of full. This whole governmental process in a democracy only works when people get involved, and there's lots of ways to get involved, ranging from volunteering on commissions and going all the way up to running for office. So please, think about that. That's what I told them too, is it only works when people get involved. And last but not least, the food was really, really good. In fact, I think I commented that it was the best food I've ever seen at a city event. So that's another reason to enroll in the Citizens Academy if you ever get the opportunity to do that. With that, we will move on to the consent calendar. These are items normally approved en masse by the council without discussion, although any council member can ask to have one or more items removed. And I actually, as soon as I figure out which item it is, have an item that I want to ask to be removed and addressed separately. Hang on a second. Jeff, I'm going to have to admit to some senioritis. Which is, where's the item for the banking services?
I.
I, thank you. Why I couldn't see that, I don't know. I'd like to ask that we separately handle item 8I. Is there anybody else who would like to remove something? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt consent color items A through H, J through M, and item N, adopting ordinance number 1546, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending ordinance 1230 for the planned development zoning district, and approving modification to the development standards contained within the plan of development for the Circle Star Development located at 1 and 2 Circle Star Way and 1709 Industrial Road. Do I need to read the partial numbers? APN number 046-240-180, 046-240-150, and 052-103-170.
Is there a second?
Second.
Not sure which one of you is first. Crystal, did you catch?
I heard Laura.
There you go. Okay. Ron, you lost out. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember Obert?
Yes. Okay, those items pass. We will deal with 8I at the end of the meeting, if that's okay, because I think the rest of the calendar is fairly full, and we have a lot of people here, and I don't want to delay, you know, make them wait around longer. So apologies, Rebecca, I guess I'm having you stick around to the end of the meeting. Next item is item 9A, receive a presentation on the Community Foundation and discuss funding needs.
Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from this out of an abundance of caution.
Well, sorry to see you go, but I understand. Thank you. Will we know where you are so we can, you know, get you back?
Crystal can text me.
Okay, sounds good. Just for the benefit of the audience, as Laura is leaving, council members are required by law not to ever even present the appearance of a conflict of interest in any kind of discussion that they may be involved in. Sometimes that's easy to determine. Many of the state laws specify, for example, on land use, if you're within a certain distance of a property, then you can't participate in the discussion. There are other things that are much more complicated and nuanced and sort of subtle, and I just want to say that I really applaud Laura being abundantly careful here in recusing herself from this, because I think she sets a really good example for the rest of us to follow. So with that, who is, who is doing the presentation? Former Mayor Davis and former Mayor Johnson.
How's that for a doubleheader, huh?
Yeah, really.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here to talk about our proposed Community Foundation. Now, since I have from time to time been accused of running on when I'm trying to talk, when I try to talk without notes, I have notes, and I'm going to stick with them, so I'm going to read through the first part. If there are questions at the end of it, we can cover, but we'll probably wait until Cameron has a chance to go do the main, the main event. So my, my area is to give you some background on building, building a community foundation opportunity in San Carlos. And this goes back a few years. Our city council began to seriously consider the matter of building community in 2005, following a few years of intense infrastructure development in San Carlos. With construction of a new library, completion of the massive grade separation project, constructing a new off-ramp from 1, southbound 101 to Britton Avenue, and a number of sewer projects, our city manager at the time, Mike Garvey, suggested that we put down our shovels and rally the community around projects that will build up rather than continue to terror part our community with infrastructure improvements. That was the beginning of it. And so, in that year, 2005, a number of town hall meetings were held to talk about the future of San Carlos, and the council adopted an initiative called Enhancing the City of Good Living. Responding to the council's call for action, two task forces were formed, Building Community and Natural Resources. The latter was soon launched with the San Carlos Green, an organization that included many knowledgeable and well-established citizens who dedicated to environmental and conservation issues. And Building Committee, the Building Community Task Force, has involved in what is now known as San Carlos Together. Over the next few years, as we and the San Carlos Together team continued to discuss all things related to building community, it became apparent that we needed structure and legal authority. So in 2009, we, the, the group that formed the San Carlos Together team, we formed a nonprofit public benefit corporation for public and charitable purposes, and were granted an IRS 501(c)(3) approval. Now we were set to do great things, except for the fact that we had no public or predictable funding. We lived on gifts from community supporters to maintain the flower baskets on Laurel Street and the annual citywide garage sale, while we assisted startup community groups such as Week of the Family and San Carlos Day of Service as their financial partner. The report you hear tonight puts a capstone on what a former council started 15 years ago. Only a community foundation as proposed can provide the funding tools needed to energize and inspire our community to improve the quality of life for all of us and provide the umbrella organization under which organizations such as San Carlos Together can continue to support startup community groups who are not incorporated and who do not have a 501(c)(3) status with funding as needed. Together, we can build, connect, and nurture our city of good living for the future. That's a quick summary of the history. Now we're actually with the main event. Cameron Johnson is here. He's always here. He led our group, he did a marvelous job. We covered all the bases, we've been at it for six months or so, and it's nice to see it come to this point of conclusion where we can all appreciate what has been done. And his excellent slides they might have, so. Cameron, it's all yours.
Thank you, Tom. Welcome, Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the city council. It's a privilege to be here. Crystal, if you move your mouse off there, I think it might go fullscreen? Or maybe not. Okay, well, we'll make do. My name's Cameron Johnson. It's been a privilege to lead the steering committee for the San Carlos Community Foundation. What we're here to present to you, I think, is a historic opportunity. So Tom laid out kind of the process that was kicked off over 15 years ago by the city council. And I think that if you were to go forward 50 years and you look at all the cumulative impact that the Community Foundation will have done for the community, I think we will have seen this as a major event in our city's history and a very wise decision to set aside some public money for investment in our community. Simply put, the purpose of the Community Foundation is to improve the quality of life for the entire San Carlos community. And we think we have a unique opportunity with a Community Foundation. And that opportunity is to significantly grow the pie of charitable donations that flow into our community. We think there is a very large untapped resource of people who want to give to their community but do not do so because they, they don't know how. So I want to ground us all very briefly in what is a Community Foundation? You can see first and foremost from this picture that a Community Foundation is people who like really large checks. But the reason for that is that a Community Foundation is an organization who gives out money to others that do good work in the community. Let me tell you what Community Foundations do, and then let me tell you why they are successful. So what do they do? They, first and foremost, they give grants to nonprofit organizations that have tangible impact in a geographic area. Many of them also create scholarship programs that allow students to be able to afford to go to college. And many still create capital campaigns that build great public facilities for their communities. So the first Community Foundation was founded in 1914 in Cleveland by this gentleman, Frederick Goff. And he hit on kind of a unique insight, which is that we all have a deep connection to our community. I bet everyone, if you introduce yourself to somebody for the first time, within five minutes, you'll say, this is where I'm from, this is where I grew up. We take great pride in our community. If I hear somebody did something great in San Carlos, even if I don't know them, I'm proud of it. And so there's, and then there's also a desire to want your community to do well and to give back. Many of us give to our colleges and universities many decades after we've graduated, simply because we felt like they gave something to us and we want to give back to them. And then, his other insight was that many, while many people have the desire to improve their community and the means to improve their community, they don't know how. And so this was his quote, "How fine would it be if an individual who was about to make out a will could go to a permanently established organization and say, here is a large sum of money, I want it to be, I want to leave it to be used for the good of the community, but I have no way of knowing what the greatest need 50 years will be from now. Therefore, I place it in your hands to determine what should be done." The Cleveland Foundation, which he founded today, has an endowment of $2.5 billion and gave $100 million in grants to their community last year. And it's a model that's been uniquely successful, such that there are now 750 community foundations in the United States and over 1,700 around the world. So the basic definition, I think the clearest definition of a Community Foundation is, Community Foundations are grant-making public charities that are dedicated to improving the lives of people in a defined local geographic area. That is their mission. It is geographically bound and meant to build up the quality of life in that place. And they bring together the financial resources of individuals, families, and businesses to support effective nonprofits in their community. I'm going to drive this point home one more time with a diagram. So imagine a community that has three nonprofits. Let's for hypothetically say that they are Healthy Cities Tutoring, Samaritan House, and the San Carlos Children's Theater. Each of these organizations has a group of supporters that provide donations every year, likely because they have a personal connection with that organization. And that's great, and that helps sustain these organizations. But there is a larger opportunity, which is that there are many thousands or tens of thousands of people in San Carlos who want to help their community but don't have a connection to Healthy Cities Tutoring, Samaritan House, or San Carlos Children's Theater. And so what a Community Foundation does is it provides that vehicle where people can feel good that they're donating to their community, and then it can be redistributed to amplify the good work that's already being done. And this creates a virtuous cycle, and this is why these foundations have been so successful. The cycle starts with an endowment. That endowment is invested. The investment income is given out as grants. Those grants go to organizations that will have real impact in their communities, and that impact is measured. And then that impact is communicated back to the community. So every year, they hold events, they do annual reports, they come to the city council and they say, this is what we have done for the previous year. And then they go back to the community and they say, because of this impact, we're asking for additional support. And they ask for fundraising, and that money is, goes back in to grow the endowment, and then year after year, the endowment grows, and you create a steady stream of income back into the community. To give you some intangible examples, here's a few community foundations from California cities of sort of similar size to San Carlos. I drew some on the lower end. You can see Gilroy Foundation put $830,000 back into their community last year. On the higher end, Santa Cruz put $5.8 million back into the community in 2017, and it gives you a sense of the range. Many of the larger community foundations have endowments in the billions of dollars. So let's talk specifically about San Carlos. So how can a Community Foundation help San Carlos? So first and foremost, as we've mentioned, we can amplify, amplify the work of existing nonprofits. There can be more people tutoring for Healthy Cities Tutoring. There can be more people serving clients from Star Vista. And when we talk about nonprofits, you should think about the nonprofits that we all know and love that are based and headquartered here and contribute every day to the civic life of our community. But then also think about the many organizations that exist in the county that serve clients in the, in San Carlos for things like domestic violence and mental health and alcohol and drug rehabilitation services, LGBT services, senior services, housing, and so forth and so on. Second, the Community Foundation will partake in capital campaigns to help fund and build amazing community projects that create a legacy and create great public spaces for our community. Third, the Community Foundation will inspire new volunteerism. So many people have great ideas, but there are a lot of ideas that never got off the ground for, for lack of $1,000 here or $5,000 there, that could have taken a great idea and created a great ongoing organization. And lastly, as we've looked at Community Foundation, we've known that they've become, you know, part of the fabric of the community, and they start to build community connections. So they become a rallying point to help connect organizations that are doing similar activity or to connect the public to volunteer opportunities. Some people have asked, you know, what is the one thing that the Community Foundation is going to do? And I think the reality is that there are so many opportunities to improve the quality of life in San Carlos. And the goal is to build an organization that is self-sustaining and grows and can evolve as the needs of the community evolve, year after year, decade after decade. So I want to talk a little bit about the process and the vision, and then I'll share some of our specific policies, and then we'll wrap up. So for the benefit of the public, I know the council is aware of this, last year, the city council settled a lawsuit with PG&E concerning a gas pipeline. The council unanimously voted to set aside $2 million to create a Community Foundation. We put out a call to the entire community. We had 56 people apply to serve on a steering committee, and 15 were selected, and we began meeting in November. This is our steering committee, and many of them are here tonight. This is an amazing group of people. It's been a great privilege to work with them. They represent people who are in their 30s through their 80s, people who grew up in San Carlos, to people who just moved here a couple of years ago. And I would say they share two attributes. One is that they, they have a great desire to have a positive impact in their community. And secondly, they have a great expertise in foundations, nonprofit organizations. I wanted to just ask them briefly to stand up, if you wouldn't mind, just to be recognized here. Thank you very much. They've done great work, and it's been a great pleasure to get to know them. So we started by examining dozens of community foundations around the country. We went through a visioning process. We created committees to put together the nuts and bolts of the organization, and we've started doing outreach to nonprofits throughout the community, which is an ongoing thing that we're doing. So our vision statement is that the, the vision is to inspire community engagement and build community connections, to be stewards of our public places and natural environment, and to strengthen the quality of life for the entire diversity of the San Carlos community now and for future generations. And our mission is that the San Carlos Community Foundation performs strategic philanthropy to create and amplify sustained and measurable impact for the San Carlos community. We also asked ourselves, where do we think this organization will be in 25 years, and what will it have accomplished? We think we will have had significant impact in areas of community need. We will have led capital campaigns to build new community spaces. We will have seeded numerous new volunteer activities. We will have an endowment in the tens of millions of dollars that's generating income for our community. We will be a connector for community volunteerism, and we will be deeply woven into the fabric of community life here in San Carlos. So how about the specifics? First and foremost, we are going to be a grant-giving organization. We anticipate two grant cycles per year. Those grants will go to nonprofits, and we will preserve the San Carlos Together organization to be able to give grants through that organization to non-501(c)(3)'s, things like... that organization to non-501(c)(3)'s, things like the Week of the Family, or other new organizations that are created by neighborhoods and citizens in San Carlos. We will base our grants on the likely community impact, and we will measure that impact. And we are hoping to start with $80,000 of grants in the first year and to grow quickly thereafter. For capital campaigns, we think they're an excellent way to have impact on the community and to get the word out about the foundation. As we do them, they will be a separate fund from the endowment. So we will raise money for that project, however much it is, and then we will present that funding, and that will be separate, and people will donate to that as a separate fund rather than the overall community foundation. And we will look to the city council to identify what the top priority projects are and where we can have the biggest impact, because ultimately, the city is going to have to own and maintain any project that's built. In terms of investment, our goal is to generate investment income, and so we will be investing in moderate investments to grow the endowment rather than just to preserve it. And our goal is to grow that endowment. 75% of all fundraising dollars that come in will go directly into the endowment unless a donor specifies that they want their donation to be deployed in that calendar year for grants. And in terms of oversight, we'll have an investment committee. We'll employ the services of outside financial advisor, and we'll do annual reporting both to the public and come here to the city council and talk about what we've done and what our financials are. In terms of fundraising, I want to emphasize that our goal is to grow the pie. We think there's a significant untapped opportunity. Our target is affluent people in San Carlos who don't give to their community. They might give to the Sierra Club, they might give to a national organization, but they don't donate here today. We understand that there's lots of organizations that are doing fundraising, and we want to be respectful to that. We want to make sure that we are focusing first and foremost on the untapped opportunities out there. And our strategies for fundraising will be fundraising events, an annual giving campaign, and we think there's a big opportunity with estate giving for people who have grown up in San Carlos, raised their children in San Carlos, and want to give back to San Carlos even after they're gone. We'll be organized by a board of community volunteers who will serve three-year terms, up to two consecutive terms. We don't anticipate any paid staff for the foreseeable future. As I mentioned, we'll do an annual report to the city council, and all of our meetings will be open to the public. Specifically with our relationship with the city council, we've had great discussions with city staff and members of the subcommittee on this. And the recommendation on all sides is to be an independent 501(c)(3) organization that has no formal relationship with the city. Although we do think it would be wise that the city council put an annual reporting requirement as a condition of the endowment. And we think it makes sense, if the city would like to, to take over the existing city council grant program, so that the city council would instead do a block grant to the community foundation. And if an organization was looking for a grant, they would be directed to the community foundation to put in a grant application there. And then finally, we want to start having immediate impact to kick off that virtuous cycle that I talked about. So we're requesting some startup funds so that we can make grants in the first year and to pay for some startup marketing and outreach efforts. So that's our presentation. We would welcome any feedback that you have about how to improve it, any questions you might have. But in closing, I would just say, we look forward to being part of the fabric of the San Carlos community, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Jeff, I just want to make sure that we're all clear on what we're doing here tonight, because this is a big and complex topic that actually is going to come back for... There's no approval tonight, but there's going to come back for approval at various points in time. So if you wouldn't mind reminding me of what we're doing here tonight, what staff's looking for, and what the future timeline kind of looks like.
I'd be happy to. I think the purpose of tonight was for the folks that are working to form a community foundation to have the opportunity to have a dialogue with the city council and the community and share the progress and the vision that they've created. It provides that touchstone to, I think, make sure they're feeling like they're on the same page as the council, who helped encourage this dream more than a year ago. The staff, now that the group has worked on and sort of formalized their plans in terms of what structure they're going to assume, we're planning on beginning our work on the draft of an endowment agreement. We anticipate that the council likely will have that in front of them in draft form for consideration late August, most likely in September. But that's the timeframe we're targeting right now for that work. That's where the council would actually be voting on an item. So I think tonight, we're just looking for commentary and making sure that the council's satisfied with the process and where everything's going. And if not, get your thoughts on how, where, and when and why we might redirect.
Thank you. Just to clarify something, maybe I misunderstood. Are we not also potentially giving staff direction on whether and what, if anything, to include in the upcoming budget cycle for this proposed or requested $200,000 of additional funds?
That certainly would be helpful. We're going to be having a study session on the budget at our next council meeting, so it certainly fits within the scope of this item to get that feedback. Or if you have any additional ideas between now and the next meeting, it will fit there as well.
Ideas we always come up with. All right. If my colleagues don't mind, since we do have a number of speakers who wish to address the council, and given the emails that we've all been getting, I think that some of the questions that we may want to ask will be prompted by commentaries, comments that are made. I'd like to do public comment before we do our questions. Is that okay? You okay with that? All right. In that case, again, two minutes per person. There's flashing lights on there that you can't miss when you're starting to run out of time. We will start with Ken Castle, followed by Debbie Blucher. Good evening, Ken.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I think the idea of a foundation is spectacular. The types of things that Cameron has outlined are terrific. The problem I have is the source of funding that you're looking at putting into this foundation. That's the PG&E fine money. To remind everybody in this room, that money came out of a disaster that killed people, that burned a good part of the city of San Bruno, that raised the question about the safety of natural gas pipelines, not just in San Bruno but in San Carlos. That money came because of backdoor communications between PG&E and the California Public Utilities Commission. And part of those lawsuits involved that kind of discussion. When this issue came up to the council two years ago, that $6 million would be forthcoming, there was a study session. There was never a formal vote. There was never a formal meeting to approve the disposition of that $6 million. And suggestions were made, let's put $3 million into the Holly interchange, let's put $1 million into affordable housing, and by the way, let's do $2 million for a foundation. Did it not occur to any member of the previous council that money that came out of a public safety disaster should be put into public safety projects in this city? Whether it's sidewalk improvements, whether it's sidewalks for schools that should have them, whether it's wildfire protection, whether it's traffic signals, whatever it is, no discussion, not a single member of the council had any kind of connection to what that money was all about and why it came here. And I really think we need to revisit that. I'm good with a foundation, but I'm not good with putting all that $6 million into things other than public safety projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, as I mentioned, is Debbie Blucher, followed by Tara Evans. And apologies if I mess up anybody's name, as I frequently do.
Hello, my name is Debbie Blucher. I'm the parent of... Thank you for your time this evening. I'm the parent of three children who are in the San Carlos School District. And I am interested to hear more about the community foundation and how it can enrich our community. But on the flip side, I'm very concerned in regards to what it may do to our schools and the SCEFF fundraising, should a partnership not be created with SCEFF? The grant SCEFF gives to our school district is flexible and less restricted than most of the other funding, allowing our district to fill important gaps that provide crucial programming that make our schools enriching and engaging. Programs SCEFF funds, such as music, the library, field trips, school counselors in smaller class sizes, are just some of the programs that are crucial for a well-rounded education. Good schools make for a strong local economy, which in turn influences housing prices. We are soon likely headed into a recession where residents may restrict their giving and will also be asked to pass new parcel taxes and school bonds. What happens to the quality of our schools if SCEFF cannot gift this very flexible grant amount each year? We need a strong planning process that ensures that a new foundation supports and does not impede other nonprofits from reaching their own fundraising goals. Our school district is facing a $2.5 million in cuts due to state underfunding of public education. On May 8, 2019, there was a huge public education rally along El Camino, up and down the peninsula, demanding adequate education funding from the state. My family and other San Carlos residents were heavily involved in the rally and galvanized around this issue. The optics of this acute education budget crisis, just as the city creates a new foundation, are really poor and undermine the true urgency SCEFF has been trying to relate to its donors. I just feel that a longer planning process would be prudent, and that the $200,000 not be included in the current budget for the community foundation at this time, and instead to have a longer planning process involving residents and other nonprofit stakeholders.
If you could move to wrapping up, please.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Tara Evans, followed by Jennifer Rudy. Good evening, Tara.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair and city council members. My name is Tara Evans, and I've been a San Carlos resident for almost 16 years. I've been a nonprofit professional for the last 25 years, and for the last 19, I've run a family foundation based in Palo Alto. And I, as with Debbie, have some concerns about the process and the future strategic planning for this new foundation. It's my contention that best practices in this sector call for an open process with buy-in from many stakeholders and a rigorous planning process that often takes several months or even years. I would encourage the council to consider hiring a nonprofit consultant, someone who is impartial and unbiased, who can really lead the city through the various steps which are considered vital when forming a new organization. I feel that a comprehensive and transparent needs assessment of the entire nonprofit community would be helpful to determine what the actual needs of this community are. Additionally, I would love someone to be asking some really difficult questions in this process. For example, what are the needs of the city and where are the gaps? Is a brand-new organization the best vehicle to meet these needs? Will another organization that will be raising money create confusion for donors and/or donor fatigue that will lead to a dramatic decline in funding for our public schools? And as a parent of two 5th graders, that is one of my greatest concerns with this issue. Additionally, what type of grant-making will have the greatest impact? And would it make more sense to design a grant-making foundation only, one that does not raise money but just gives out grants? This process should ideally be led by someone who can reach out to all of the stakeholders and get a true sense of what the residents of San Carlos want and need. Many people think that giving away money is easy. But the truth is, to have a real impact and make a big difference, it requires a well-thought-out strategy and a comprehensive process. In conclusion, I would respectfully ask the council to be a good steward of this money and just to take one step back. Let's invest in an open and thorough process which truly represents our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tara. Jennifer Rudy, followed by Elena Corso.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. My name is Jennifer Rudy. I currently serve on the board of SCEFF, but I want to take that hat off, truthfully. And tonight, I talk to you from the perspective as someone who's an 11-year San Carlos resident and a 20-year nonprofit professional. I'd like to share my perspective as someone who's been a funder at a large private foundation. What I learned as a grant-maker is that while physically giving away money is easy, being thoughtful, impactful, and most importantly, responsible, is not. To that point, I firmly believe it's imperative that much more planning, collaboration, and due diligence take place before following through with what I feel is a very aggressive summer 2019 launch timeline and current $200,000 budget request for this proposed new community foundation. When a proposal came across my desk as a professional at a foundation, a nonprofit unequivocally had to answer these questions to even be considered for funding. Could they demonstrate a specific problem or need based on data? How have the target population and all community stakeholders been involved in designing the program for which they're asking for funding? Are there other organizations working in their community with whom they could solve this issue? And have they entered into mutually beneficial agreements to avoid duplication? Do their objectives, budget, organizational model, and available financial and human resources align with the need they've demonstrated? The ability for an organization to meet this standard is simply a fundamental hallmark of effective and responsible philanthropy. In its current form, the community foundation would not move forward in my approval process yet, and I really want to hit the "yet" home. Instead, I'd reach out to them about a possible capacity-building grant that would fund a needs assessment to crystallize their objectives based on need, and I would ask for the council members to move the foundation in that direction. I read a quote this morning, I'm wrapping up. "There is no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about." I ask you to back up and allow us as a community to be engaged in the process, and we all will benefit as San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Elena Corso, followed by Cynthia Wigan.
Hello, thank you for having me. Elena Corso, recent Citizens Academy graduate. I have my pin on Mark. Thank you for having me. I come here wearing two hats this evening. One is a San Carlos resident, and one is the president of the San Carlos Education Foundation. Sorry. Take a breath. As I wrote to all of our council members this past weekend, I heard loosely about the community foundation and Citizens Academy and more in depth when Cameron Johnson came to speak at our SCEFF executive committee last Thursday. In reading the agenda for this evening and accompanying handouts for tonight's meeting, I felt naive and uneducated that an organization of this size and stature was presenting a quick timeline and draft bylaws so soon, and to which their goal is to be the go-to nonprofit in the city. I want to make it clear to all that I am not here to say that the community foundation should not be formed or as an adversary. Quite the opposite, actually. I am sincerely appreciative that our council voted to allocate a portion of the PG&E settlement to grow something for our community long-term and believe a properly-formed community foundation can increase giving and engagement in our city. It is this community that I love dearly, because it is full of residents who are doers, innovators, philanthropists, educators, engagers, and most importantly, collaborators. It is in the same spirit of collaboration that I ask the council and the steering committee invite all of the stakeholders in the community and nonprofit leaders to help build out the community foundation together, with suggestions outlined in our handout. I do have some specific requests this evening. The name that's referred to in all the documents is the San Carlos Community Foundation, and we would request that be proposed to be changed. The San Carlos Education Foundation, the names are far too similar, both in their full name and how their abbreviated names sound phonetically. Using the SCCF name undermines the 36-year history of our educational foundation and will confuse our community and donors. SCEFF's branding is important to our success, donor recognition, marketing, and value. My time's up. But thank you for having me, Ed Moore.
Thank you, Elena. Appreciate that. Appreciate your honoring the time commitment to Cynthia Wigan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, council members. I really appreciate this process and being able to speak openly with you. My name is Cynthia Wigan. I'm a resident of San Carlos for nearly 22 years. I work for Healthy Cities. I'm also a volunteer for eight years. And I've been greatly involved in our schools and our community. I am asking the council to delay on approving the $200,000 for the foundation. The ideas on it are great, but a lot of them seem half-baked. And for that reason, I have hesitation. I combed over the report this weekend, and my concerns are twofold. Besides the foundation itself, I echo Elena's words about the name. But more on the foundation. $6 million was given to the city from PG&E. $2 million was set aside for the foundation. With great money comes great responsibility. It benefits the community to use this money. I don't think they should be tapped for more. We're already asked to pay more for garbage, more for water. I paid 100% of my sidewalk repair. I think that it can be used in as endowment. I think that it can be used in as endowment and used to benefit the community without tapping them for more. I also looked at the other cities mentioned in the report. Berkeley has a population of 122,000 and change. It's four times the size of San Carlos. Their education foundation raises $1,005,000. That is a great difference compared to our 30,000 and change population and our $2.5 million from our education foundation. These are not, I have other cities examples, but my time's running out. But these are not comparable numbers, and I don't want our education foundation impacted because of the great work it does in our home values, attracting talent for our businesses, reducing crime, and just general help for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. You always were good at timing.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight on the next steps of the San Carlos Community Foundation. I want to thank the community members who worked on this effort for the past six, seven months. Sorry as I catch my breath. My mother, myself, my children, all native San Carlsans, we've each had our own unique experiences growing up in this town over the past 70 years, and we've been blessed to do that. I have come to know each and every one of you on the dais and many, many of the people behind me in the audience tonight as a volunteer on numerous organizations and civic engagement activities, trying to improve our amazing town of San Carlos. 30 years ago, I took my first position on nonprofit board and have served consecutively since then. Just last year, I became the Executive Director of Healthy Cities Tutoring, a longstanding, community-created, local nonprofit that engages over 350 San Carlsans as community volunteer tutors on an annual basis, working with children in our schools to help them succeed. I support nonprofits and the vital work they do in our communities. I support and supported Cameron's idea when he mentioned it to me two years ago, and I really want nothing more than to be here in support of this effort tonight in San Carlos. I would support a local community foundation that is collaborative, inclusive, transparent, promotes civic engagement, pride, builds community, one that helps steward and grow our existing local nonprofits, and provides resources to new organizations and those yet to come. It can provide access to funding, expertise, training, collaborative planning, and mutually beneficial fundraising goals. One organization working toward a community goal determined through outreach, needs assessment, and community surveys. This is what I support. And as ED of a local nonprofit, I'd hoped to be engaged as a part of the process.
Karen, can I ask you to move to wrap up, please?
I will. So I asked the council to direct staff to suggest the committee consider a few items before moving forward. Please engage local nonprofit leaders and board members via a working group to share your plans and solicit feedback and build bridges with those you help, you want to help and support. Conduct a thorough needs assessment of our community and our nonprofits to learn where and how the foundation can have the greatest strategic impact and leverage its resources.
Karen, I really need to ask you to wrap up. You're over time.
Okay. And the other ways was to set aside matching grants to smaller organizations to incentivize donors. I hope that I can share these ideas.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on this topic? If you do, feel free to step up and hand a card in to Crystal. Okay, seeing none to the dais, we're now back to asking questions based on the presentation and the public comment that we heard. Has generally been our case, I would rather than go through the lighting system and whatnot, just have at it. You know what? See, the problem here is that I think you guys like the lights. Just go.
I have a question. I guess this is for Cameron. Are we asking questions now, or comments, or anything, any of the above? Questions?
It's questions. If you wish to make comments, that's fine, too. It's not that strictly separated.
So Cameron, I want to thank you for all of the hard work and all of the volunteers in this team that you built. I think it's really amazing, and in essence, I'm not opposed to the grant-making or the endowment. I think putting that money away, you know, and saving it and preserving it and using the interest to fund, you know, nonprofits that are doing amazing work in our town is great. What is your response to kind of the concerns that have been raised here tonight about the collaboration, reaching out to the other nonprofits that are here, working together, not competing for the same donor funds, but finding a way to meet needs?
Sure, yeah. Well, let me start specifically with SCEFF. So I have two children in the San Carlos School District. I'm a SCEFF donor, a big supporter of SCEFF. I met with the SCEFF Board last week, and Kathy, who's the Executive Director, said to me, you know, if, you know, this shouldn't result in, you know, $1 less for public education in San Carlos. And in that view, she and I are in complete alignment. You know, our goal is to grow the overall amount of resources that are available for the community, and I think that we're going to have a fabulous collaboration with SCEFF. I think that we have more work to do, clearly, in terms of building confidence with SCEFF that that's the case. I know that it is a particularly sensitive time at the moment, because there's an education funding shortfall in the district, and I think, I want to be particularly sensitive about that. We have proposed a couple of ideas, such as having a SCEFF Board member serve on the community foundation, or potentially serving, doing a joint committee, or creating a memorandum of understanding, or really anything that, you know, SCEFF would suggest that would help build the confidence that indeed we have the same overarching mission, which is to improve the community, but we're targeting different donors and we're supplying resources to different parts of the community. I will say, I want to personally apologize to Karen. Where's Karen? Hi Karen. I'm sorry. And we should have reached out to you. We have been focusing on figuring out our specific policies, and we have met with some nonprofit organizations, but honestly, we have a lot more to do, and that's good feedback for us, and we will do that in the coming weeks.
Thanks, Cameron and Tom, for the presentation, and for all of you for all the time and effort you've put into creating this. I certainly think it's a good step for us to be taking to create a community foundation and using some of that funding to build an endowment. Because I do think that there is lots of untapped potential within this community for giving. I don't, I see new businesses coming in all the time. I see other opportunities that are there, and it's something we should and can take advantage of, and I think grow the whole pie for everybody on all sides. And I think, I mean, I would actually wish you guys were more ambitious in your first year goals, because I think we should think big. And I'm particularly interested, I think, for me, for the capital campaigns, because I do think there's an opportunity there that allows us to potentially achieve some things that maybe are not attainable otherwise. Things that I hear from the community, things about, you know, a community center, a pool, a theater, more parks, or some things like that, that I think collaborating with the greater community, with the city, there's great potential for that. So I'm excited about that. But I also, you know, I got lots of emails and other things as well, so I would definitely encourage more outreach over the next couple of months and collaboration. I appreciate Karen's idea about sort of a working group of the other nonprofits. I think that's a smart idea to reach out and hear from them to do that. So for me, I mean, I'm going to, and I guess encourage you to look at best practices as well. I want to make sure you're hearing and you're looking at best practices in terms of, you know, the amount of funding going to the endowment, other things moving forward, because and ultimately, I would say that, you know, for us, the decision is, do we, where do we fund it? How do we fund it? This group can go out and form the foundation, go and run without the city, and do things. And obviously, a partnership and collaboration with everybody would be a better result with SCEFF and others and everyone to do that. So I appreciate everything that everyone's going, and I think we'll have more discussion around sort of the startup funding and other things, but I just, you know, thank you. I'll probably have more questions afterward. I'll open with that, with comments first.
I'll just say thank you for the feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank everybody who wrote emails, who came up and spoke. It's a fraction of the people that wrote us and even texted me and called about this issue. My faith in this community is continually renewed when we have various issues and people I've never seen before come to these meetings. I can't tell you how enjoyable it is to have more people than I can count in this room. So I really appreciate your comments. I think there are some great suggestions that have come out of what people have said tonight. And Cameron, I got to tell you, I am extremely disappointed that this foundation is not going to give me my pool, so, but...
We didn't say that.
I know. Having said that, I actually do have some questions for you. So obviously, there is a concern among various local foundations about, you know, possibly having too many players and cutting up the pie too much, and people's willingness to contribute being diminished. When you and I met before, you told me you'd done a lot of research and that you had studied other foundations and that sort of thing. So my question to you is, have you seen examples where community foundations have been created in smaller cities like this that had a lot of foundations where it's diminished the giving capacity to any one particular, not just to single out SCEFF, but a tutoring program, or a children's theater, or an athletic program? Have you seen that?
You know, I don't have evidence of it. I mean, I'm sure it's happened somewhere, and I don't want to dismiss the concerns, but I want to reiterate that I don't think that this is in any way close to a zero-sum game. I think there is lots of untapped resources in the community. I did bring a couple slides in anticipation of this question, which is, we looked at many, many communities, and I would say it's more the rule than the exception that communities that have education foundations also have community foundations, and they seem to be working harmoniously kind of for the greater good of their communities.
Have you reached out to any of them?
I have not personally.
I'm just thinking, maybe that might, you might want to make that part of the process and find out if they've had some challenges and some issues that maybe they had to work through that, you know, you can share with the other nonprofits here and maybe get some answers. Just a couple other questions. You have, you're creating an endowment that's going to have investment options. What sort of limitations are you going to have in that? I mean, 30 years ago, I would have said, are you going to invest in junk bonds? But I mean, today, I'd say, are you going to invest in IPOs? I mean, what is your investment policy, or how is your investment policy going to deal with your endowment?
So we're not going to pick and choose individual stocks or assets. We're going to be invested in funds, and we're going to employ the services of an investment professional to create a diversified portfolio that, you know, has a moderate risk level with the goal of, you know, shall we say, you know, 4%, 5%, 6% growth per year? And I think there's lots of models out there of endowments and investment policies. There's more detail in your packet, but that's our approach.
Okay. And then, when would you expect that this process is completed? When do you expect you'd be fully independent of any involvement with the city?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a couple of things that have to happen. The steps would be that the community foundation would have to create its own 501(c)(3) and incorporate and get bylaws. We've had some good assistance from our city attorney in that process, and that will take some months. And then, assuming that the council decides to do so, a transfer of the endowment. And so those would be really the two things. You need an organization with a board with bylaws that's functioning, recognizes a 501(c)(3) and then the transfer of the endowment. And there's obviously some unknowns. So there's the council calendar. Jeff indicated we may come back in September, and then there's the timeline that we would take. So inconceivably as early as the, you know, late summer, early fall.
Okay. My final comment is that, you know, we have an incredibly giving community, and it sounds like a lot of these concerns are based on some, you know, some uncertainty. And usually with uncertainty comes some sort of fear, and so I would encourage you, if you're comfortable with it, make your email address available to all these people. I'll leave it up to you whether you give your cellphone out, but I think the more... I have it, but no.
It's okay. His cellphone mailbox is always full.
That's true. I have to send him a text to get him to call me back.
Good strategy.
But to, you know, continue to reach out, I thought, you know, a lot of people have, obviously, everybody's paying attention now, and I think it's important that everybody feel that they've been heard and that their input has some value, and that what comes out of this is something that the entire community really supports, and that really can be a sort of a, you know, symbiotic relationship where, you know, the community foundation is supporting all the others. I apologize. I did have, I did have one other question I wanted to ask you. Do you foresee situations where, say, that a particular foundation might have a goal, a fundraising goal, and they're just short of it? Would the community foundation be in a position to maybe grant funds to help them get over that, the finish line, to fund that particular project?
Well, I mean, I think, conceptually, yes. I think, you know, one of the things that the members of the SCEFF Board brought up is concern about community confusion. And so we share that concern. So if the community foundation, say, for instance, is a donor to SCEFF, then you really do run the confusion of people saying, well, if I give to the community foundation, well then I've done all I need to do, because the community foundation gives to SCEFF.
Right.
If they're separate entities with separate missions and separate donors, then I think it's a little clearer for the community. So that, but conceptually, you know, the goal of the community foundation is to have the highest impact on the quality of life, and that's how we will assess every grant application. And so hypothetically, if an organization comes and says, if not for this last gap of funding, we won't be able to have this huge impact for our community, hometown days will be canceled unless we get the last, you know, $10,000. That's, I think, a perfect opportunity to have impact.
Okay. Thank you.
So thank you very much for the presentation, both you and Tom, and for all the comments that people made, and for all the emails that have been sent in. I definitely understand the sensitivity that people have whenever a new player shows up in an environment. I do have some questions, but I have a couple of comments that I want to make first. One is, and this is sort of deep in history, but Jeff and I tried to go back down memory lane as best we could this afternoon when I raised the issue with him. You know, there actually is an interesting example here of something that was done by the city years ago, which actually is Healthy Cities Tutoring. Healthy Cities was started because there was some state grant funding available for tutoring programs that came to the city, and the city, I don't know whether it's fair to say that the city inaugurated, or I think Donna Beck, who was working for the city at the time, said, hey, this would be a great idea. If you gave me the money, I'll go work on it. But the point is, it was seed money that was put in by the city council to get Healthy Cities going. And that's the kind of thing, so it's hardly unheard of even in San Carlos to do this kind of thing. The other point I wanted to make, just to correct what I think may be a bit of a misimpression based on some of the emails I've gotten and some of the comments that some speakers have made tonight. It is, I believe it would be incorrect to characterize the individuals that you see on the San Carlos Community Foundation Board as kind of like having been picked by the council to go off and create something. It literally was, and in fact, there was a debate on the dais about exactly this point. It literally was a call to whoever wanted to work on something like this in the community, and a whole bunch of people responded, and it got winnowed down to a bunch of people who have spent a lot of time and effort over the last six to nine months working on this. And in that sense, it's really no different, other than the fact that the city sent out the postcard to ask people to apply, those same individuals could have found each other anyway and come together and said, gee, we'd like to do this foundation. And once the council decided to put money aside for some philanthropic purpose, to approach the council, asking for an endowment. So I just want people to be aware of that. It's not like the city council picked these individuals. I, for one, very much wanted the process to work the way it did, because I wanted it to be a grassroots kind of thing, and I've been very pleased with all the work that has been done and will continue to be done. So enough temporarily, at least with the comments. Couple of questions. There was a comment that was new in the public comment tonight, which I have to admit, I thought, oh, I hadn't thought about that. San Carlos Community Foundation, San Carlos Educational Foundation. Is there a possibility that the community foundation would be open to changing its name?
Of course, yeah. We have no attachment to the name. It's really... It's really about the opportunity and the impact, and, you know, the name is secondary. So we're happy to change the name if that makes it easier for the community.
It sounds like it might. I mean, I'll leave that for you guys to discuss. There was a question that was raised in one or more of the emails that I got today, basically, I guess what I would say is challenging the notion that any foundation of the scale could run with no paid staff. Now, on the one hand, and I, speaking as a council member, I would probably ask that we put some strings on the endowment just to make sure that it's properly run when the funds, we'd actually talk about transferring the funds. But you guys have obviously thought about this and looked at all these other models. Can you give us some comfort about why you think that model will work?
Yeah, I mean, as community foundations grow in size and the amount of money that they're generating, oftentimes, they do take on paid staff. At the size that we're talking about, I think it's not necessary. What we envision is employing, you know, the resources of outside consultants, so hiring a financial advisor, hiring an attorney, potentially hiring, you know, a marketing or branding consultant who can help with logos or run events, things like that. But those would be consulting relationships on a, you know, short-term basis. And I think we have people on our steering committee who are executive directors at community foundations, and their advice is that, given the size and scope that we are, that we can do it without full-time staff.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that because I didn't understand that. So it's, the no paid, no foundation staff actually doesn't mean you're not hiring people. It's just on a consultancy basis.
That's right. I mean, and our hope would be that we'd find people in the community who would be willing to donate their time. But, you know, if we need to consult, you know, an accountant once a quarter to help file the taxes, and we have to pay them some money, that's what we have to do.
Fair enough. To get down into a little bit of nuts and bolts on the request for some additional funding, as you and I talked about the other day, I guess I'd like a little bit of more insight into what makes up the requested $200,000 because frankly, it struck me as being, I was having a hard time visualizing where all the money would go.
Yeah, so, I mean, what, if we were to start the endowment today, we would have to wait potentially a full year of investment to reap the investment income that you would then go through a grant process to be able to deploy that money into the community, which then would sort of delay kind of the starting of this process, probably 18 months or so. And so the way that we think about it is, you know, one potential alternative is to say, let's call the endowment 1.9 million or 1.8 million and use some part of that for some additional startup capital. We have looked at, kind of budgeted out what we think the grants would be for the first three years and what the cost would be to run some initial events and do some branding and kind of get the organization up and running. And so that's the number that we've come up with, and we can provide more detail offline if you're looking for the specifics.
Yeah, actually, I wouldn't mind it, whatever specific you have. That'd be great.
Absolutely.
So, you know, the, one of the other thoughts I had was, I'd be interested if you could share a little bit of perspective on the, sort of the timing of the foundation group, how you chose when to talk to who. Because, I mean, reading in between the lines a little bit, I think there's more than a little bit of concern like, hey, we haven't heard from these guys, and so therefore, they must be a threat. Okay? Whereas, when I've talked to you, I don't get the sense that there was no, like, diabolical plan going on there. So perhaps you could give us a little enlightenment on what was going on.
Yeah, there's no diabolical plan. We all work full-time, and we are city volunteers, you know, and so there's just a challenge of the schedule and making sure that works with everybody, and that's not an excuse. It's more of an explanation. We have prioritized really, we took a group of people with a lot of expertise, but we had to form together as a group and get to know each other and figure out what we wanted to do. We had to figure out what a community foundation is and where we could go, and then we had to get into the nuts and bolts of how this would work. So that is why we are here. But yes, I think the criticism that we have not reached out adequately to other organizations is valid, and I think it's something that we hope to correct very quickly.
One, for now, final thought, and then I'll make sure that other folks here get a chance to ask questions because I see somebody's light is on. Given the need, as you just said, for, or the desirability of having these further in-depth discussions with some of the other existing players in town, what's your sense about whether or not the group that you're a part of would be willing to, like, the release, let's say, of the $200,000 wouldn't be until later in this year, which would, incidentally, give us, give you a chance, you guys a chance to go out and have some of those conversations so that hopefully, when the decision point comes back to us for actually release of funds, followed by the release of the endowment money, there will be more comfort with what's going on. Would that totally disrupt your plans, or is that?
No, not necessarily. I think that just the practical consideration is that we've asked a lot of a bunch of citizen volunteers and their time. And I think as the, sort of leading up this process, I would like to set the expectations with them of, how much more time are we asking? Is this an if or a when? Should we start constituting a board? And should we choose among ourselves who wants to move to that board, or are we not at that process yet? And so my hope is that, I think the desire of the entire group, obviously, we have a lot of enthusiasm. We think that this is a huge opportunity for our community. We're very eager to get going. And given the, essentially, the green light from the council, we will start to do so. We'll start to, the process of creating an organization and so forth and so on. So it's really at your discretion, but I think the longer we delay, you know, the more momentum we kind of lose in the overall process.
That makes sense to me, and I understand the sensitivity. By the way, thank you for reminding me. Thank you very much to all the volunteers we have in San Carlos who make all of our volunteer organizations work, but particularly for those of you who have joined this new organization. And just to be clear, the way I was thinking, Cameron, is it would not be like the time makes it conditional on it. It's more like the time is just to have some more time for discussion. I personally, at this point, really believe that there is a way for this group of people to work with the other existing organizations to come to a way to work together. Okay? So I'm not trying to make it contingent in that sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, even at our last meeting, we were talking about, you know, even amongst ourselves, if we were to pull some resources, at least to start the filing fee and all of that kind of thing. So, I mean, there's definitely ways to move forward without an appropriation.
Okay. Adam?
I have a couple of questions now. So Cameron, and I know you touched on with Mark a little bit, just on the $200,000, I guess I'd want to get a better sense for what, I got some of it for grant, but what's sort of the other piece of it, and how do you see that implemented?
It would be to do, basically, marketing and branding and events. So establish a logo, create a website, do some initial marketing to potential donors, host a big, you know, kickoff event, have a booth at the farmer's market, have a booth at community events, signage, you know, things that are, the goal is to get the word out and make it clear to people what the community foundation is, what its purpose is. And our belief is that that upfront investment in the marketing is going to pay long-term dividends in terms of building a brand that people understand and feel trust in.
And then, can you talk a little bit more about sort of your thoughts around the board structure with regards to, I know you mentioned about including maybe SCAF on the board or others, and so you've got a bunch of other nonprofits on the board too, and what, who may be not as large as SCAF, right? You've got other ones. What kind of role do you see them having, or how can they participate in that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it would be advantageous to have people on the board who either currently serve on the boards of other nonprofits or who have served in the past on nonprofits, great expertise and community field about where we can have the biggest impact. And then I would just emphasize that we plan to make every meeting open to the public and to have annual reporting so that we have a very transparent process to build confidence.
And I guess, and I think, I echo Mark's thoughts on the, sort of the need to maybe, I think you talked about more outreach, more collaboration and opportunity to do that. And I think it's also a question of, you know, you said you've got two grant-making cycles. You're going to be looking at things, and in terms of your funding outreach, you've got, some of the nonprofits also have, you know, you've got SCAF Day, or I know Healthy Cities has done some days or other things. And sort of, I would encourage you to, as you look through things, how do you not compete with some of those days so you're not bumping up against that as well? So there's some sort of calendars that you can all collaborate around, you know, let's not step on each other's toes while we're doing things.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, and I think the theme, which I agree with and has been echoed with the group, is to be respectful, you know, and to be humble and to say, this is a new initiative, and as such, people are going to have some skepticism about it, and that we need to earn the trust of other organizations as we grow the foundation.
And I guess, one other thing, on the, you know, the endowment piece, I guess, and I like the idea of having sort of the annual, sort of, report back. I'd also want to put some sort of trigger that if you, there was a need to dip into that foundation, that we might have a role around that since you're now, then you're now dipping into that, you know, funding that was given over to the community foundation.
I mean, I think that's totally appropriate for, it is not the intention of the foundation to ever dip into the endowment, and so any restriction that the city council wants to put in to say, foundation may not use, you know, dip into the endowment without expressed approval is consistent with what our intentions are.
And so I guess, from our, and I guess from direction standpoint, I mean, we're going to give some direction, and, I mean, I actually would love, I know, sort of looking at September timeframe for maybe to look at the funding. I wouldn't mind if there was an opportunity in the August timeframe to sort of have you come back and sort of report back that you've gotten a lot of information, you've gotten feedback from people, to be able to come back and say, we met with all these groups, we had this, just to get one more update around that, I think would be helpful for me prior to that sort of September timeframe.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mark. So for me, it's really important to not lose sight that we are stewards of these community funds. We, us up here and the foundation. And these funds are meant to benefit our whole community, right? And I think our first priority should be to do no harm, right? And so I think it's been mentioned many times here tonight that we don't want to be competing for the same dollars from the same donors. And I personally have sat on the PTA, I've sat on the SCAF board, I've sat on the Parks and Rec Foundation, and from my experience, there's been donor fatigue, there's volunteer fatigue. While I can see that there are perhaps individuals in San Carlos who aren't giving to the educational or, you know, certain organizations untapped funds, I think that's, you know, definitely something to look into. But I feel like, you know, there's been a lost opportunity so far to collaborate with all of these other organizations in town and hear from them, and I would like to see, you know, that work done before we proceed. You know, it was, resident reminded me today, when SCAF came into being, there was very long discussions with all of the PTAs about how not to knock on the same doors on Laurel Street, right? You don't want every PTA president and the SCAF board knocking on the same business doors. And that process, that MOU process, took a very long time. So what I'm envisioning with this collaboration with these other nonprofits is not one meeting or one coffee. It's a robust process where every executive director or board member really feels heard that they've had, you know, an opportunity to communicate, but also to weigh in on the process. I think that these are the experts in town who have run endowments and have been working hard for years out in our community raising these dollars. They are the experts, and they should really be tapped for their knowledge in moving forward with this foundation. My next question, I wanted to ask you, so in the packet, you, it's discussed that this will be independent from the city, and yet there's a portion where it talks about using e-notify and the city's website. So it does seem like there's some use of city resources, and I'm wondering if you can explain how that relationship would be?
Sure.
How you envision it?
Yeah, when we've talked about any potential e-notify or city social media or city newsletters, we see it as a one-time thing, which is to essentially announce that the council, should the council decide to do this, that the council has decided to do this, that there's a new organization, but that it wouldn't be an ongoing marketing support from taxpayer money.
Okay, thank you. When you go out to fundraise, maybe this is too down in the weeds, but has your volunteer base, have you guys discussed what the pitch is? Because I know that tonight, a lot of residents raised concerns that there hasn't been a needs assessment. And, you know, I know that we kind of maybe get into the chicken and the egg question here, but I do think that it raises a valid point that maybe we do need some kind of needs assessment, both of our nonprofit groups and, you know, what their needs are and how the foundation could be useful to them in that capacity, and also what our community wants, because again, this is community dollars. What would the community like to see in doing that kind of robust process?
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, we look to some of the needs assessments that the council's done and that the county have done in the past. I would say that, you know, these foundations, in the way that they traditionally work, are, they're not a top-down, that people up on the board pick, you know, this is the community need, and then they go solve a specific problem. They are a call for grants, and you say, hey, here's our goal. We want to have a positive impact on the San Carlos community. Here's the resources that we have available. Come give us a pitch. And so it is a sort of a market-based entrepreneurial thing where people come in, and you assess them and you score them based on what do you think is the biggest impact? How many people are going to be impacted? Where are the types of impacts there is? Okay, well, this grant says, you know, 200 more people are going to get alcohol and drug treatment in San Carlos. Okay, this one says, we're going to, you know, do after-school basketball programs for, you know, 200 kids. And you have a board of community volunteers who are steeped in an understanding of the needs and the values of the community that make, that weigh those trade-offs and make an assessment of where is the best use of that money. I would say that the reason that we're, when you ask like what the pitch is, the reason that we're asking for some upfront funding is to go through a grant cycle and really to demonstrate to the community that we have had impact. All of the incentives are aligned such that if you don't have impact, then no one's going to give to you, right? But if you can demonstrate and you can say, this is the type of impact that we've had, we make your community better, will you consider contributing for the further enrichment of your community? That's when you can start the virtuous cycle, and that's what we hope to do.
All right.
I'll just add one more comment.
Oh, no, sure, go ahead. I'm sorry, I thought you had said you were done.
I was just continuing to think about this. I would like to revisit the city having a little more oversight as well, and possibly a staff member or someone on the board. I think that, given that this is a large amount of public funds, it's something that I would like to discuss going into the endowment.
Just as a comment, as you were saying that, I did do some, had some discussions back with the prior council when we were first kicking around this idea, talking with Jim Ruane, the former mayor of San Bruno. Thank you, Ron. And they actually, they didn't do that, but they did include some mechanisms in their endowment grant to provide some kind of oversight. I don't know how, I would be interested, certainly be willing to have a discussion about what, if any, kind of oversight relationships we want to put in, oversight provisions we want to put in when we're talking about the actual endowment grant.
And if I may, I mean, we're certainly open to those conversations. I think that, just to throw it out there, part of the reason that we had talked about, it had been suggested, you know, perhaps the mayor should serve on the community foundation board or staff member, is that, you know, I think everyone feels like the separation is good not to give some sense that, you know, you can influence the city by contributing to the community foundation, and that that was the reason to have that independence.
Or that you can influence the foundation by contributing to the mayor's reelection campaign. That might not be so good either.
Either way, that's right.
All right, so we will include that staff. You got that, or we'll have that as part of the discussion. Well, again, thank you very much, everybody, everybody on all the different sides of this issue who came forward and contacted the council and sacrificed their evening to come talk to us, and again, And again, Cameron and David, and Tom Davids, thank you very much for a very informative presentation and interesting discussion.
Thank you very much.
We are going to take a five-minute adjournment. We'll start up the meeting again at 10:09. I think we really do need a sergeant-at-arms to go grab Adam.
Somebody go get him.
Yeah, maybe he did. All right. Next item on the agenda is item 9B, another report to council, this time on the wildfire updates. Chief, good to see you.
Good evening, Chair Ober, and council members. Dave Pucci with the Fire Department, here to give you an update of activities since I last reported to you a couple of months ago on some of the activities we're doing for wildfire prevention and addressing the wildfire threat to San Carlos. So to remind you, we have two, on the fuels management portion of our work, we have two different funding sources right now. One is Firesafe San Mateo County, and then one is the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant that you approved the funding at the last meeting that was at. And those, both those grant projects are in two different phases of work. For the Firesafe San Mateo County grant, there's actually work being done already. So Eaton Park and Big Canyon Park are actively being worked on. We've used some big equipment to bring down some brush, and actually goats arrived today. We're going to have goats in town for the next 30 days. They're going to start off at Eaton Park. They consume the poison oak and the other things that are really hard for the hand crews to work in, and then we're going to move them to another park, and they're going to be traveling around. You're probably going to see trailers of goats traveling around town for the next 30 days or so. So that is actively in progress. They arrived today. For the FEMA grant, the FEMA grant, we have completed the environmental review for the comprehensive plan for the city, and that is now sitting with FEMA for review. Once they finish their review, they'll look at it and say, "Yes, we're good with this", or "No, we need to make these adjustments", and then they will be approved for Phase 2, which opens up the larger fund of money that we have available to us, which will allow us to really dig into all the city parks as well as some city lots that we've identified that we want to address. And that will include Crestview Highlands Park, and, like I said, some other unnamed just city lots that we just want to address. Since the last meeting, we did hold two community meetings that you directed me to deliver. They were very well received. We had approximately 80 people at Domenico Winery, and then at Hiller, we had about 150 people. The meetings went very well. We got a lot of positive feedback from them. Got a good feeling from the community. There's a lot of concern out there, and we definitely captured, I think, the essence of what their concerns are regarding evacuation routes, fuels management, emergency notifications. So with that, we provided a planning kit to all the people that attended the meeting. And within that planning kit, that included information on how to harden your home. That's how to change the roofing material, the siding material, vents, things that they could do to make their house less likely to ignite, as well as defensible space, as well as personal planning, because really, everybody's plan is going to be a little different depending on the family situation, whether they have access to functional needs, small children. Everyone's plan is going to need to be a little bit different, so we gave them that planning tool. We are also developing that planning tool that we're going to be mailing out to our residents in San Carlos as well. So we're providing that to even the people that did not attend the meeting. The website has been updated with the video, as well as all of the comments and all of the answers to the comments that I generated, and those are available on the website right now. So Wild Urban Interface inspections are, within the Wui area of San Carlos, we have 30, about 3,800 individual residences. That includes single-family homes, and it also includes apartment buildings. In an apartment building, if it has four units, it's going to count as four individual residences. So that's the inspections that we're doing. And we'll be doing that this spring. So that'll be engine companies driving down in the Wui area, looking to identify those code violations that we need to enforce. To date, over about the last 12 months or so, we've also received about 70 complaints that we've actually received a complaint, and we'll send a fire prevention officer out there to investigate and to enforce from giving them advice all the way up to code violations. So our next steps, on June 8th, we're going to be doing something that we haven't done before. We're going to be conducting an evacuation drill. So there will be a hypothetical fire in the city of San Carlos, and a neighborhood is, we're going to be seeking participation from this neighborhood. We're going to be doing it very early on a Saturday morning, kicking it off around 7:00 in the morning. And we're going to be testing several things. One is our communications with people through SMC Alert, and then also being able to guide that traffic in direction that we want it to go, and just see what our communication is like and how people respond to it. So we're going to be putting door hangers on this neighborhood in the next week or so, as well as sending out a flyer. And with it, they'll have the opportunity to sign up and say, "Yes, I want to participate in this drill", as well as sign up for SMC Alert so we can communicate with them that day. So that is something new. We'll have definitely some pictures and things that we can report to you afterwards on how that goes. The new mapping process, this has been funded through the county through Measure K funding. We're going to be doing polygons that'll cover the city, and each polygon will describe fuel modeling, escape routes, the number of people there, what the resource request would be. If we had a fire in a particular area, we'll plan ahead on how many engines and helicopters and everything that we would need for that area. And then later, what we'll be able to do is we'll actually be able to use that to have predetermined evacuation routes for each polygon and directions on which way they would go. And it would be built out to where it could actually connect with SMC Alert. So if I were to go on a fire in a particular area of town, I would be able to tell the sheriff's office, simply evacuate Polygon Number 1 and 2, or whatever the numbers are going to be, and they would be able to activate SMC Alert through that system. So it's pretty comprehensive with the consultants been hired, and we anticipate the mapping is going to be done in the next two to three months or so. And there'll be a lot more work that goes into it, but that's the end state that we're working towards. And we're continuing to work on early detection sensors, cameras, speaking with CalFire as well as the county. They've identified a couple of areas that they want to start testing some of these cameras, and they are more up on that 280 corridor. So initially, when we test them to see the feasibility and the cost and the upkeep and the bandwidth that's necessary, we'll be able to keep it out of any controversial place. It's really just covering a public space on the 280 corridor so we can truly test it and not have any concern from the public as we test those to see the feasibility. And I already mentioned the auto notification of the evacuation that that would tie into the polygon, as well as whatever technology we decide that we want to move towards. We want that to also be an automated notification should it trigger an alarm, so we speed up that notification process. And that's the end of my report, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Chief. I think what I'm going to do, since it worked well, has worked well so far when we've tried it, is I'm going to allow public comment first, and then we'll come back to questions, since a lot of times, questions get sparked by public comment. So by this point, I think everybody knows the drill, two minutes a person, flashing lights, all that kind of stuff. We have Ken Castle leading off, followed by Bonnie McClure.
I appreciate the honor of being able to lead off the comment period on these things. I want to, first of all, commend the Fire Department for the organization and the management of these two outreach sessions. Of course, I worked very hard to get the word out through social media, through a newspaper column that was published in the Daily Journal, and a lot of word of mouth to encourage people to come to these sessions. And I think the way it was organized with roundtable meetings and survey questions, I happened to sit at a table at the Aviation Museum where a couple who lived in the area had been visiting a relative in Santa Rosa when the Tubbs Fire occurred. And they gave us chapter-by-chapter description of the terror they faced, the lack of communication they had, the concern about where they would evacuate in the middle of the night, since it was about 2:00 AM, and them personally witnessing cars burning on Highway 101 as they fled the scene. And so, that really kind of pushed it home that, you know, it's not so far away from us that these things could happen. I've been indulging in a lot of conferences, one of which recently was a fire weather workshop at San Jose State where there is a very unique department that looks at fire weather conditions and learned a few important things. One is that we don't have enough weather stations throughout the Bay Area to monitor microclimates, which can have a big impact on the potential for fire and the directions of fire. We need more stations. We could have one in San Carlos. It would be a good space to have one, in addition to cameras. The second thing that I learned is that the issues that we have are the Diablo winds, which are different than the Santa Ana winds, but they can be very unpredictable, and they can still drive a lot of the issues that we have. And they could possibly give rise to fire whirls, otherwise known as fornatos, which could happen anywhere. They're still studying those. The third thing I learned is that the lowest moisture content of the day in the middle of the summer is not in the middle of the day, during the hottest time of the day. It's in the middle of the night, during darkness. And so, the fires often happen in the middle of the night. So there are a lot of things that we need to look at, certainly the Highway 280 corridor. And as I've said in the past, let's not put all the burden on the Fire Department. You know, CalFire is the expert on wildfires. City Fire Departments are learning, and they're going to these fires to help them out, but it's still a learning process for these Wildland Urban Interface areas. It is a regional issue. We need to collaborate with cities, with the county, with CalFire. And as far as I'm concerned, our Fire Department
Can you move towards wrapping up, please?
Sure. Has done an exemplary job, but let's not put all the burden on them. Thanks.
Thank you, Ken. And Bonnie, you're next. Ken, I just want to say also, thank you for, you alluded to it, but to all your efforts in getting this issue highlighted, because clearly, there are a lot of people in San Carlos who are concerned about it, but I think it's fair to say that it would not have gotten the priority it did had you not spent all the effort and time you did. So thank you. Bonnie?
Okay, good evening, I'm both councilpeople. And I'm Bonnie McClure, a resident of San Carlos for over 60 years, and a member of the local Sierra Club. I wanted to address the issue of building in all zones of the city, not just the high wildfire, because you don't know where the fire is going to spread. And we need to do it in a wise manner, and we need the non-combustible materials on the outside of our buildings, and the planting. We often don't consider the planting, but things like, we look at drought-resistant plants and natives, but Manzanita is something that shouldn't be planted because it's very flammable. It's just like, quick like that. And we need those lists, and they're in the kiosks by the Building Department in City Hall. But how many people go down there and get them? And are they updated all the time on what's good building materials and what are good planting materials? So we need to get them out. And I was pleased to hear that we're going to be sending the material out to the residents. I didn't get to either one of those fire meetings, and I'm probably typical of a lot of people. It just, I had something else that was going on those days. And we need to keep our citizens really up to date on these lists. And I'd like to see something posted in the library. I'd like to see something posted in Home Depot. Home Depot sells a lot of materials that probably shouldn't be used, and I don't know if they let you do it or not, but it's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next up is Camille King, followed by Suzanne Emerson.
Thank you for letting me talk just for a minute. And thank you, Chief, for the work that you've done so far. I went to the Hiller meeting. It was well-attended and well-run, and generated a lot of dialogue. Especially, a lot of you have been to my house. I live in the fire zone on a street on Madera. And I think the issue of these narrow winding roads, parking, and, you know, evacuation plans are really, really important. You know, as we saw in the Paradise Fire, a lot of the people died because the fire trucks were coming one way, and people were trying to get out, and it just became kind of a clogged-up mess. And we have the same problem here. You know that when a car's, right now, on my street, and on a lot of the streets up in the hills, if there's a car parked on the side of the road, a UPS truck can barely get by, you know, with the space it's left on the road. Never mind two cars, you know, trying to pass with the traffic. My next-door neighbor lost a tree when a truck was going up with the, pulling a bed. And in the middle of the day, in the middle of the week, no fire, no, you know, plenty of light, and he just misjudged the arc of the bend in front of his house, and the trailer just took the tree down. And can you imagine, in the middle of the night with the fire, how people would be able to get through that bend? I was coming up, maybe a month ago, up Madera from the Alameda, and there was a fire truck, a city fire truck, just doing their little, I know they do these patrols. And if, for those of you who know the neighborhood, you come up the Alameda to Madera, and there's a very sharp left-hand turn to go up to Vista del Grande. And the fire truck had to do a three-point turn to get up onto Vista del Grande. They could not. And so, the whole idea of evacuation plans in the hills. And if any, I know lots of you guys live on the flats. I would encourage you, if you have an extra 10 minutes sometime, to go up the hills to the end of Winding Way, and just think about what it would be like to get out of that road. Dead end, it dead ends at the end of, you know, at the really steep part of Devonshire Canyon. Impossible. Okay, all right.
Can you move towards wrapping up?
Yeah, we need, especially, you know, traffic studies, and especially parking. I think the other thing we have to look at in terms of keeping our roads open. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Emerson. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Suzanne Emerson. I enjoyed going to one of the workshops that was presented. I thought that in the summary that came out afterwards, there were some topics that had not been addressed to the extent I would like to see them addressed. I am not speaking in my official capacity on the Transportation and Circulation Commission this evening. That hat is off. But I do have a vested interest in transportation after all those years, talking about that stuff. I'm really interested in knowing more about what our standards should be for how much clear travel lane we should have on those narrow winding roads in the hills, especially in our high wildfire areas, and whether we've got areas where we should be looking at parking restrictions, like they're doing in the Oakland Hills, in order to maintain the necessary travel width. It might be just on the curviest part or the narrowest part, but currently, we don't, we don't know what the answer is to where we've got problems and where we don't. I think there needs to be some additional surveying information sought on that issue. I've also had some people suggest that we should be looking for opportunities to create additional evacuation routes. And though there are not a lot of opportunities like those out there, there is a right-of-way on Cranfield, and it covers three different jurisdictions. We've got the city, Belmont, and unincorporated county that owns portions of the Cranfield right-of-way. Cranfield right-of-way starts over by the high school, and then goes all the way up to the little side street, I never remember the name of, starts with a W, Witheridge Road. So the possibility exists to clear a fire break or to install a gravel road that can be used for emergency purposes. I have no idea whether that's something that would be of a benefit from a fire escape perspective or not. One of the fire reference materials, the San Mateo-Santa Cruz Community Wildfire Protection Plan, indicates that clearing unlandscaped vegetation directly next to the evacuation routes are important. Oh, no, my light is beeping. I'm interested in knowing whether throwing some of those goats on the undeveloped portions next to our evacuation routes are important, and also, please look at building codes to make sure that we're using best practices for fire safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for actually watching the lights. And by the way, just a piece of advice, you never lose the hat. So we appreciate your service on the Transportation Commission. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on this topic? If there is, please just come up, and you can fill out a card. Seeing none, Chief, you might as well come back, because I'm sure we have some questions. And Laura?
Thank you, Chair. So again, thank you so much for your leadership on this issue and the community engagement and the discussion, the workshops. I'm also pleased to see that you have outlined here some next steps around the mapping process for all of San Mateo County. And it sounds, if I'm understanding correctly, that that will get at trying to identify some of these bottlenecks or pinch points where evacuation might be a bit of a challenge. Is that fair to say?
We'll look at that. Some of the legacy infrastructure, so first off, if someone wanted to build a new road with new homes today, that road would have to be a minimum of 20 feet wide, okay? The legacy infrastructure, there's a number of roads. I was on Cranfield and Winding Way today, driving the neighborhoods. There's a number of places where the property line will come up to the roadway, and the roadway is still very narrow. So there's some places where there's probably just not an opportunity to do any widening. So then the option would become, okay, what do you the option would become, okay, what do you want a red zone? And on a lot of these roads, there's a lot of vehicles parked on there, too. So I mean, the community input, it's a balance. We get to our calls. I'm not aware of us ever missing a call because of not being able to travel down a particular road. But when you start talking about limiting parking, that becomes a balance that the individual community would really need to input on to say, we want to block this side of the street. And because it will obviously be very congested during an evacuation. The hills are what they are.
Okay. But it sounds like this is a first step towards doing an assessment and understanding where there might be issues. And in terms of what we do about that, that would come as a second phase of that. Is that correct?
Yeah. So the polygons will identify the best option, which may not be a great option. It'll design what the best option is from that particular neighborhood. Yeah, we'll be looking at those bottlenecks.
I see. Okay. I have a few more questions, but I'll let-
Oh, you can continue.
So and then in terms of, it looks like we also have some education that's going out that is dovetailing off of the workshops that were held. I noticed, I did a little bit of research this weekend, and it looks like there's some national preparedness weeks. And I'm just wondering if we might be able to also tap into more of a national program that's already underway and kind of creating an event around it around, you know, in San Carlos of some sort.
Well, we do have our Public Safety Day that we do once a year. We have Hometown Days that we'll be at. We'll be able to push this information out of those venues as well. You know, the more people that we reach and educate, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
All right. So it's just part of an ongoing planning process?
Yes, it has, yeah.
Okay. All right. And then, and then the technology review, I read in the report that it appeared that people felt that that wasn't, that was rather vague. I think there was a question posed, but not a lot of insight provided in terms of what is the technology? How does it work? What are the objectives? How would it work into the process, you know, of fire detection and mitigation? So as part of your next step, could you, what's your expected timing on when you might come back with some insights around that aspect of this?
I'll have to speak with CAL FIRE and just then find out when they're looking at actually installing a couple cameras. The thing with fire technology right now is it's moving about as fast as your next iPhone development. It is, there's so many companies invested in that and so many new potentials out there and the software that goes with it. So it doesn't have to be a camera that's actually watched by a person all the time. So a lot of changes. Let me get back to you on the timeline with that because I would want to talk to CAL FIRE and really to find out when they're talking about installing them along the 280 corridor so we can look at the results from those. And also, there'll be conferences and things. I'll be able to gather more information. But I could, I think that, I think anytime that I'm going to be reporting to you, I'm going to be giving you an update of what we've been able to learn new on the technology side. That will be have to be an ongoing thing.
And then the last item, thank you for that. And the last item, I also saw in there that people are really concerned about the barrier on Hallmark and Crestview. And I mentioned that to you that day. And you talked about there could be a possibility, for example, of installing a removable barrier that was something that could be removed remotely or that was electronic as opposed to what we have up there now because it's a rather tight fit for, you know, a car or a fire truck to get through. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, the current gate would allow one vehicle out. We can fit an engine through it, but with inches on either side. So would not provide the volume that you would want for true evacuation. I've had some informal conversations with several people from our neighboring jurisdiction. And I'm going to have to talk to my boss tomorrow to find out how we can get that informal conversation to be a little bit more formal because I think there's, I think there's an opportunity there.
By the way, you can fit motorcycles through there pretty easily.
Yeah, boys.
Yes. Adam?
Chief, thanks for the presentation. And Ken, thanks for your help on this as well. So just three quick questions. One, on the polygon, and you may have mentioned this, I might have just missed it. So I understand you're developing sort of these overlays of polygons for evacuation routes and things. And so what's the notification process around that? What's the plan for sort of letting residents know? Or is there a plan yet? Is it still in the works?
What the, what the overall plan is, is to actually develop the polygons. There'll be somebody from the sheriff's office as well as from fire working together with the consultants that are coming in to do this. We develop the polygon. It's not just based on roadways, but also topography, how the neighborhood's put together, and the fuel modeling and all that, what the behavior, the predicted behavior is supposed to be. And then, once that's done, with the end state, the vision is that this system will tie directly into SMC Alert, which will be able to be activated from the field, from probably a deputy's vehicle. And they would hit the polygons they want to evacuate, and they would launch that message.
And that message would talk about the various evacuation routes as well?
Yes. So the message, we can build them however we want. But I would imagine that we'd say, there's a fire in your area, your evacuation route's available to you, you're such and such street. We can change that depending. If we have to change, it's going to take time because if the fire behavior changes what we're going to, the instructions will have to create the message. But we can still get that message out pretty quickly.
Then I guess from that end, I mean, I subscribe to SMC Alert. I know a lot of people do, but it's not everybody. So it's, how do we, I guess I'd be concerned about getting that message out more broadly, or at least pushing more people to sign up for SMC Alert as well as a sort of practice.
That is the quickest system we have available to us for emergency notifications. I could launch a message from my iPhone. But if someone doesn't sign up for SMC Alert, there are other systems. I don't know if you've received an Amber Alert on your phone. That's not a system that you sign up for that's called iPOS. That's something that the federal government has put together. So we can force a message on every cell phone in a geographic area. It just takes time. So the SMC Alert is the fastest. As you start getting to those bigger systems that are more robust that will interrupt your TV programming, it's the same system. We could change the street signs on 280 when they give traffic alerts and all that. We can do all of that. It's just those systems take longer. The SMC Alert is the fastest option that we have.
So it sounds like, and I'm on the Emergency Services Council, so I will take this back to look out for the county. But it sounds like maybe another postcard campaign, maybe once that's done, to sort of alert people that, hey, there's this service that you can get will notify you with through SMC Alert, just to try to encourage more signups as well. I know there's other things that processes, but I'd be sort of interested in looking at, at that. Secondly, you mentioned about the kits that you distributed. Is there an opportunity for other people to get those kits? Can we make them available? What's the way to push those out more?
What we distribute was a planning tool. They had the checklists, how to prepare your home, how to prepare your family plan, what you want to pack, suggestions for things you might want to consider so you can get out the door fast, so you don't have to think about it. So those are, we're shrinking them down. It's going to be kind of small font, but it's being turned into a booklet. It's being branded, and we're going to mail them out.
Awesome. And then, thank you. And then lastly, I guess I'd be, and Laura mentioned about some of the roads and evacuation routes. I would be interested to see, as you do an assessment, if there are, you know, I understand some areas are challenging to make changes, but there may be some that have some more flexibility, or if there's some that we can maybe identify as priority routes that we might want to look at and see, are there things that we can do as a council? We can work with you and others to make some changes to sort of improve at least those main evacuation routes.
Sure. And we'll, I'll share what the data that we developed with Public Works also so they can have input on their streets.
Right. Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for your hard work. I think that you hit the ground running on this issue. And the community has appreciated it. We appreciate it. I think that the preparedness meetings, the wildfire outreach, and the community town halls that were done were very professional, filled with tons of information. So really great work on that. Yeah. And I saw that the videos are now posted on the city's website. And I read your Q and A document as well, which I thought was really thoughtful and very well-written. So I'm wondering how we push those things out to the community more versus, like maybe on the city's Facebook page, or the newsletter, or how do we kind of increase community awareness that you can go and watch, you know, Ms. McClure said that she was busy on those two days and she couldn't make it. So how do we, how do we push that out to the broader community and make sure that people know that they can, you know, watch the video and read the document to get answers to their questions?
I think I could work with the communications staff and bring some up some ideas. I think social media is an easy one. I think we'd certainly do that.
Okay. Okay, great. And same with the June evacuation. That's a small neighborhood in town, right? And how is the community going to be notified that that's happening?
Actually, the Boy Scout troop that was here earlier volunteered to help us help out with that. So we're going to be putting door hangers on all the, all the houses in the neighborhood that we want to use. And then we're also going to be sending a postcard to them as well. So we're targeting about 300 homes with the hope that we'll get 100 that participate. So we can see how it goes.
Okay. And will the larger community know that this is just a drill? And when they see the fire trucks evacuating people, that there's not this mass panic in San Carlos?
Yes, we're going to be putting up light-up signs on Edgewood and Crestview and Kenyatta where the, where the focus of this drill is going to be, as well as putting things out on social media.
Okay, great. And then I just wanted to build on the SMC Alert because I feel it's like 40% of people are registered on the system. It's not-
I don't think it reaches 40%. I mean, it gets discussed at the Emergency Services Council quite often. And honestly, it doesn't all fall on the county to get people to sign up. It's something that the cities need to do. It's a really important system. I don't believe it's up to 40%, though.
Okay. Is there any way that people can be enrolled automatically and then they have to unsubscribe?
So recently, the, the emergency notification turned into an opt-out system. So hypothetically, everyone would automatically be in it, and you would only not get the notifications if you specifically got your information and withdrew it. But what we're dealing with and what the county's trying to find a solution is, is phone numbers aren't necessarily what they used to be. 10 years ago, when we, when I set up the first system in Robert City, I called AT&amp;T and said, give me every phone number in our jurisdiction. And people had a lot of landlines. But now people live in LA and they moved to San Carlos, and they just keep their phone number. And there's not necessarily a way to detect that. So it's good in concept that it's an opt-out system. But we're still wrestling with how we're going to actually collect that data. We can still get the, all the landline stuff is easy. It's really the cell phones when people, people carry them with them when they go. So that's why those other systems I talked about, even though they're slower, are still really important to us because we know that we can reach a phone involuntarily, if you will. But it will take longer.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You just need to contact the NSA.
They probably have it.
Ron?
Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Dave. Great presentation, as always. You mentioned that you got something like 70 complaints over the last, you investigated over 70 complaints in the last year. What was the primary nature of those complaints?
I was about to say all of them. And I'll go with that because I can't think of anything other than it's all weed abatement and just overgrowth. Whether it's eucalyptus, multiple eucalyptus trees on someone's property that have been unmaintained, heavy brush that just hasn't been maintained, clearances around houses, it's been that.
So like a neighbor saying, my neighbor's eucalyptus tree is hanging, branch is hanging over my roof type of thing.
And some of those complaints are about the same problem spot as well.
I think Laura, or Sarah covered this, but about, on this, on this evacuation drill, I know you're putting out door hangers, and you're going to have signs and that sort of thing. On the actual morning, do you have loudspeakers or is it completely voluntary?
No, it's completely voluntary. We're not going to be waking people up at seven o'clock in the morning unless they want to. But that's why we're doing the sign up on the city website as well as having to sign up for SMC Alert.
Well, speaking of that, if there really was an actual emergency, would you resort to like a loudspeaker on a car?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's a given.
That's routine, yeah.
Yeah, okay. One of the things I read in the report, they talked a lot about cameras. And then there was a mention in a couple places about, I think some residents mentioned it at the meetings, about sirens. And I remember sirens as a kid. I mean, but it was for a different purpose, you know, so we were doing an atom bomb drill or something. Is that something that is planned or can be incorporated along with cameras? Is it used anywhere?
I can't think of a jurisdiction. The problem with sirens is it's a nonspecific warning. So a siren in Half Moon Bay means tsunami. So there, we could do something like that and just educate the public that if you hear the siren go off, that means there's a fire. But then again, does that create a bigger problem for us? Because now you have all the neighborhoods dumping out onto Crestview and Edgewood and all those routes, even though only maybe a small portion would need to. So the problem with sirens is that nonspecific instruction that goes with it.
I have one of those alerts in my house that, you know, the smoke detector and to test it, you push it, and the first thing it says is, "Fire, fire." The next one is, you know, carbon monoxide. And I don't know if that type of technology would, would be useful or not.
There is a system, and I'm blanking on the name of it, but it is, it comes from the military. Mendel Park is actually testing it right now. That is essentially a big loudspeaker that you would actually be able to give verbal instructions. And the technology allows it to travel quite far. So we're watching them as they test that system, too. So the agencies up and down the county, a lot of us are doing slightly different things. And sometimes when one agency is testing a system like that, we'll just sit back and let, then let us know if it's working for them or not, and then invest time elsewhere.
Okay. So this came up in a discussion I had recently with, with Jeff. We were talking about, you know, where we are, where we live. We are, what, 10, 12 miles from the coast. What sort of, what sort of mitigation, I guess is probably the best question to ask. Does the marine influence that we have in this area, what sort of beneficial effect, if any, would it have in terms of our risk for wildfire?
It just comes down to frequency. We, so the moisture that comes over here keeps things fairly moist, even over the summer. But that doesn't ever mean that we're not subject to having fire on any given day. But it does affect the frequency of large-scale fires that we see in an area like this versus other parts of the state that are much drier consistently over the summer. We could have four or five hot days in a row, and we can certainly have a fire. And then we see a break in the heat and a shift in the wind that brings on that fog layer that cools things off for a while, too. So it's just frequency, but it doesn't mean that it's not a risk that we can't have a fire on any given day.
Right. But it might potentially minimize the, or the intensity of it, of a fire? Or would maybe the sheer volume of fire sort of negate that?
Well, I mean, if we had a fire that was that big, you know, when I go to fires in other parts of the state, you will have a month, a month-long hot, dry temperatures. Where here, we might have a well-established fire, which we did in Woodside two years ago, and it took a couple days to get out. But that hot, dry period lasts for four or five days, and then it moderates and cools and gets, the humidities come up. We don't have the, typically get those really hot sustained periods.
So it gave you an opportunity to get some control.
We have good opportunity in this county to catch these fires. So in a lot of the areas that we have, that's why we've been able to, we've had a lot of grass fires and veg fires in the county. We are able to catch them and typically in a couple hours at most, even on San Bruno Mountain and that area, too.
Right. I thought, I also thought of an idea when you guys were talking about all the, you know, the outreach that you do. We have this National Night Out every year. And I know that our police and fire departments are very prominent there. Have you guys planned on giving out information at those, at the National Night?
I think any public interaction that we have is a good opportunity to pass out this information.
And then I forget, I think Laura mentioned something about evacuation routes. Obviously, that's one of my big things. I guess the, the theme I took away from reading all of the, you know, the report from the meetings, was that there's sort of three areas. There was, there's a lot of the issues center around evacuation routes, the alert system, which you've covered, and then the vegetation mitigation, which is obviously very important. I see that that's started and it's going to be ongoing. The whole issue about escape routes, let's suppose for a minute, we, we figure out a way to open that gate quickly and easily in the event of a fire. Is that enough? Do you think that would be enough? Do we need to explore an additional route? I mean, we've talked about that.
Well, I mean, ultimately, just because we're never going to know exactly where a fire is going to start, which direction it's going to travel, and how quickly, the more options typically will give you a better chance of success. I will tell you that we're looking at some technology that you can actually simulate evacuations from neighborhoods. And it's, it's an actual sand table that I'm trying to get through a grant. So you can actually have your actual neighborhood, and it'll, it'll tell you approximately the number of people living in there and the number of vehicles that are going to be used, and actually model an evacuation. And we'll be able to see those choke points. The technology's out there to actually model that and, you know, and see, you can actually see it play out.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, for a good presentation. Number of questions and comments, many of which actually are probably going to involve Greg and Jeff. So whoever's appropriate, chime in. First question I have is, the point was raised, I think by Suzanne and Camille and some others in emails today about evacuation routes and congested roads and narrow roads. And you were talking about that earlier. Do we have the statutory authority? I mean, basically, we're trying to deal here with a very serious, although low probability of occurrence, public safety hazard, namely, people burning to death because they can't get out of some area that's on fire. Do we have the authority to just decree, sorry, you can't park along this street?
That's, that's one of the few areas where we have almost complete control is over the public rights of ways. So we can, the city can regulate parking on public streets.
Do we, would it be possible- Do we, would it be possible both, I imagine from your answer, statutorily it could. So therefore, the question may become, would there be value in having a system like this where basically during, we didn't impose no parking restrictions except during certain high-risk times. We just put out an alert saying, "During those times, you are not allowed to park on the street, and we'll tow your car if we find it there." That becomes both an enforcement and a notification issue, but it tries to balance the notion of most of the time, even a narrow street's not a big deal from an evacuation point of view because you're not doing evacuations.
Yeah. The parking, the way the parking laws work is it requires posted signage and in order to cite people, but there might be some way to figure out a way to pass an ordinance that would enable a public official to declare some emergency, some sort of an emergency or some sort of a situation where we can regulate it. But I'd have to really look into see what the extent of our authority is and because it could be, you know, you can imagine it might be a problem.
Yeah. Before you do that, would such a rule, if it existed, be of any use to you, or it'd be kind of like, by the time we put the alert out there, the damage would be done?
Coming up with a criteria that would make sense to me, to have something like that in place would be fairly easy, I would think. We determine when we have a red flag day. It's a very straightforward calculation on wind and fuel moisture and temperature. The problem that I would see is the residents on that street, to be able to enforce it, how would we know that we notified it? We could launch an SMC Alert, which we are planning to do this summer, when there is red flag warnings, that we would notify everybody just for awareness, similar to the mountain lion sightings and that kind of thing. I wouldn't know legally if that would be enough to be able to enforce a...
Greg, correct me, but I always remember the comment that was told to me by a judge many years ago when I was disputing a parking ticket because I hadn't seen the sign that said I couldn't park there. And he looked at me and said, "Ignorance of the law is not a defense."
That would definitely be his question.
Well, I mean, the other aspect is if people are not legally parked in certain neighborhoods. I mean, some of these streets, I think, do have no parking on one side of the street already, and so if there's someone parked illegally, we certainly can do something about that.
Well, let's, perhaps you can do a little low-level research about it. Here's the issue that I'm kind of wrestling with in my mind. I think that, and not to say the other issues aren't important, but if disaster really does strike, evacuation's going to be really critical, okay? I mean, very, very critical. And that's not the time to find out that, you know, people are fleeing in one direction and the fire trucks are trying to get in, and unfortunately, there's only one lane of traffic because there's parked cars on the side of the street. And it would be politically challenging to ban parking, even to go to the point of banning parking places, but maybe we need to consider doing that. And apropos of that, I was going to suggest to you that if you have a good result, as I hope you will, from your first drill, I would strongly recommend that you do a drill in one of these really badly configured areas, okay? And dramatize to people that, yeah, okay, you might very well be dead because of what's happened or because the way things are set up. I'm not trying to be too hyperbolic here, but I do think we need to get people's attention.
No, I agree. And there are people that live on streets that just do not have a good evacuation route. They don't, especially at the end of winding ways, you start talking about those streets. There, that is, that's the risk benefit that the resident has to weigh, that if they want to live in an area like that for the beauty, that the risk is because of wildfire, they don't have a good way to get out.
I may have knit two things together properly. What I'm getting at is if we wanted to some date to consider banning parking on certain streets because of the nature of how they're configured, a way of getting the populace to perhaps accept that or not fight it too much is if we do a drill and we say there were disastrous results that came out as a result of the drill, this is a step to try and deal with it. So I'll leave it for you guys to think about that some more. The, let's see. Parking, evac routes. Oh, this may be a Jeff question. Is informed San Carlos set up so that if an individual had a concern about overgrown vegetation on a particular property adjacent to them or whatnot, that they could report it? Or maybe that's a Steve question.
I will answer it as best I can, which is I believe so, and then I'll, and then there we have confirmation. It is so.
It is so. Okay. Because that, I noticed in reading through the feedback from a number of the participants at the two community meetings, that was one of the comments that occurred a lot, is people saw problems, but they weren't sure how to report them or what they could do about them. And so in part of our communication outreach, maybe we need to remind people, we have this tool that can be used to do that. And hopefully, they won't do like what happened with the sidewalk trip and fall and have hundreds of things reported in a small area. Let's see. I guess the last comment I'll make is, this is actually a good time for all this because it's budget time and it's budget tweak time. So I would ask staff, and particularly yourself, Chief, to think about whether there are some things, whether it's additional drills or how to increase the outreach resources or what have you, to try and get a higher level of awareness amongst the public about this because I think this is a very timely thing to do. And I would just assume, you know, for lack of a few bucks, I would just assume not have a problem exist someplace down the road.
Yeah, and we're never going to be able to completely mitigate our way out of wildfires.
Sure.
They're going to continue to happen. Expectation-wise, too, on the fuels management, and we've already got the goats reserved for 30 days next summer, too, right? So we're planning a year ahead. But this is going to be a multi-year project to really get things, especially in the city parks and those city-owned parcels, dialed into where we want, to where we go into that maintenance phase. There just isn't the resources out there to get some of the work done, like with Calfire Hand Crews. We've got them reserved for July and August this year. But there are definitely some limited resources at the state level that we need that's, we're going to have to be on this for a long time. This is not just a one-time thing.
That's fair enough. And I'm glad you mentioned the goats because I wanted to ask you about that. Suzanne, I think either tonight or in an email, had mentioned about, I think it was both, actually, mentioned about using goats to clear adjacency to rights of way, as I recall. When you were talking about goats, my sense was they were on public, clearing public property, parks and whatnot. Is it possible to use them to clear that kind of situation where I guess it would be, it's private property, but it's adjacent to a right-of-way?
That's called brushing. And so what our plan right now is because when we first applied for the FEMA grant, we got, you know, X number of dollars, and that was really a pretty comprehensive plan. Then we got the Fire Safe San Mateo County money, and that actually kind of got us ahead of the game on the FEMA grant. So we're anticipating that we're going to have some savings on the FEMA grant that's going to allow us to update FEMA and say, "Okay, we did all of this, but now we want to do some of this roadside work and some other identified things to address."
Okay. So it is part of the plan to try and do that as you can?
Yes.
And again, I'll just remind you, if it's a resourcing kind of issue, this is a great time of year to be talking about that. Laura.
Thank you. So just one of the things, Dave, that you mentioned to me, too, is that, or what I heard you say at the workshop, was that if you feel unsafe at any, unsafe at any time, you know, feel free to leave. I think that's a really great message. And so I think as much as we can communicate to people so that they're empowered to go ahead and take it upon themselves to evacuate, not wait for the government to tell them to do so, I think would be really helpful. And I am really thinking that this idea around doing the assessment around the community evacuation, the streets and directions and all that kind of stuff is very important. So I would hope that you would bring back your assessment and your recommendations around that so that we could start building that out. And I also appreciate the suggestion by Ms. McClure earlier that we also look at roofing materials. I grew up in Southern California and grew up near a hill where it was, every summer it would catch on fire, and now those fires are much larger. And they did move towards requiring different roofing materials and things like that when people had to replace their roof. So I think as another area for us to look at, I think if we could look at our, you know, maybe our building ordinance and our materials around that might be helpful.
So currently, there are some houses out there with wood shake roofs. So if they ever get to the point where they re-roof, they would, they would be required to do a fire-resistant material.
So we have that?
Yes. And then also, if you do a remodel, that involves more than 50% of your house, that triggers a series of fire-resistant exterior surfaces and such.
All right. Well, thank you, Chief. Very much appreciate that. That ends item 9B. If my colleagues are okay with it, because we have one member of the public who has been waiting patiently to comment on 11A, I'd like to take that out of order, and we'll come back to the fire station. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay. So 11A, public hearing, consideration of increasing residential and commercial wastewater rates for fiscal years 2019, '20 through 2022-23, and introducing an ordinance amending San Carlos Municipal Code 13.08.160 sewer service charges and fees established. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, City Council members. What's tonight is the actual holding of the Prop. 218, public hearing in regards to the annual sewer rates. We did conduct, and with me, I do have Alex Handler from Bartle and Wells, so he'd be doing the bulk of the presentations. However, what I did want to mention to you, however, is as of 5:00 today, we actually received 11 protests, or we have 11 protests. So I believe you have eight in your packet now, and three more came in after, or at 5:00, of which we needed 5,462 parcels in protest for the rejection of the sewer rate proposal. So I'd like to turn this over to Alex Handler, who will actually do go through the process of the presentation. So Alex.
Hi there. Nice to see everybody again. At the council's pleasure, I can keep this to about a minute, if you would like. Would that be the preference? We've been through this a couple of times leading up to this. I'll be real quick. You guys provide sewer collection. The wastewater goes to Silicon Valley Clean Water, a regional treatment plant for treatment and effluent disposal. They're in the middle of doing a $850 million capital upgrade program to rebuild portions of the treatment plant in the Influent Force Main. You're going to have to fund your share. In terms of sewer finances, the sewer enterprise is, it's an enterprise fund, it's financially self-supporting. The rates are really the underlying financial revenues that you get for most of all the revenues, so you have to keep rates in line with your funding needs. I mentioned the key challenges. Number one is paying for your share of upgrades at the Silicon Valley Clean Water Wastewater Treatment Plant, Influent Force Main. They've been going after low-rate financing from the WIFIA program, from state revolving fund, supplemented by bonds and some cash. So there's going to be a lot of debt service that's going to continue to accrue that San Carlos is going to have to pay its share for. So we're looking at debt service going from about $3.5 million this year and phasing into approaching $7 million over the next eight years. So on top of that, you've got a lot of old sewer lines, 50, 100 years old, made of, you know, vitrified clay. A lot of them are kind of past their prime and need of replacement. The city has been addressing its highest priority funding needs, its grade-five deficiencies, but you've got a lot of additional basins to go. Unfortunately, the dollars don't go as far as they used to, so there is the goal of phasing in the funding a little bit higher to make sure you can continue to address those needs to a level of $6 million per year, escalating in inflation. And on top of that, every agency needs some small increases just for cost inflation. Right now, your rates are kind of in the, around the middle of the pack compared to other agencies in San Mateo County. We think with the proposed rate increases, you're going to stay roughly where you are, somewhere in the middle range because virtually every agency out there is dealing with the same issues that you are in terms of aging infrastructure, need for rehabilitation. A lot of these agencies are in the middle of multi-year rate increases, and some are going through a similar process that you are right now. We develop financial projections. We try to build in the latest and greatest information. What we're recommending is looking long-term, going with steady 4.5% rate increases each year for the next up to four years. The first year includes some minor rate structural realignment, just making sure the rates are in line with the cost of service. This slide just shows graphically the projections, and you can see the red line shows the revenues keeping in line roughly with your projected expenses. This slide shows the projected rates. Again, you have fixed residential rates, volumetric commercial rates, subject to a minimum charge. Again, the first year, there's, you know, it's not exactly 4.5% for everybody because of the rate realignment, but the subsequent years would be 4.5%. The final thing I just wanted to mention is the city did implement a low-income discount a couple of years ago, 10% discount for customers who are qualified for the PG&E care program. You do have a number of folks who have taken advantage of that, but more who could. So again, just getting the message out there for homeowners who qualify for the PG&E care program, the city does have a 10% sewer rate discount program, which is very generously funded by the city's general fund because you can't fund that from having other rate payers pay more to subsidize lower rates for some others. In terms of the process, we've been here in February and March kind of going over this. City got out its Prop. 218 notices more than 45 days ago. Tonight is the hearing for considering adoption of these rates. The way it works with 218 is those kind of represent the proposed rates. At the council's pleasure, you could always adopt something lower than that if you thought that was eligible, or only adopt a few years, not all the years. We're recommending the four years at 4.5%. And assuming rates are approved, they'd become effective starting July 1 each year, collected with the property tax rolls for most customers. And that concludes. Turn it over to the council for questions and discussion.
Thank you, Alex. That was actually a lot more than a minute, so you should consider a career in politics. But thank you for, thank you for abbreviating it anyway. No, seriously, thank you for abbreviating. So I'm going to have a public comment, I think on this item. Can I do public comment first?
This is a public, actually a public hearing item, so you're going to open the public hearing for anyone who wants to speak.
Ah, I thought that happened automatically when I did it, but...
You are supposed to have everybody speak on every agenda item as well, but this is a technical public hearing.
No problem. So we're going to open the public hearing. Does that require council action or I just decree? Okay. So I have one speaker card from Razmic Belushin. If you'd like to address the council, if anybody else would like to address the council on this topic, please fill out a card and give it to Crystal. Good evening.
Good evening. I own a property in San Carlos since 1976. It's a long time. I don't want to count how many years I was. And I owned a restaurant for 32 years in the same property. I no longer own the restaurant. I gave up the restaurant business. However, I sympathize with the restaurant industry, and my property is a small property relatively, and in the past five years, I've paid $100,000 in sewer fees. And I have only just one little restaurant within that property. And the proposal is that every year, the property tax, sewer tax, is going to go up basically $1,000 a year, which is approximately $100 a month. Maybe it's not very much to some people, but in restaurant industry, that's a part-time employee. And it's, I think we should really consider changing our motto of San Carlos from city of good living to city of good restaurants because we have so many of them, and competition is intense because of it. It's not so much as, you know, all the restaurants are full, but they need to make money to pay for these fees. All the restaurants eventually end up paying that fee. It's not really borne by the landlord. Landlord simply is a conduit to collect the money from the tenant. Most commercial leases include that provision within the lease. So I collect my money from the tenants, and probably you would think that, "Why would I even bother to come talk to you today about it?" Because it's not money from my pocket, per se. But I think the restaurant industry is being unfairly treated and targeted, basically, paying a very high rate. I don't think a small restaurant should pay $2,000 a month for sewer fees. That's just unreasonable to me. But I just wanted to make my comment. That was my comment. I just think it's too much money to pay for sewer fees for each restaurant. There are so many of them, too. So it's not just my little tiny restaurant that pays $2,000. A lot of them pay. A lot of them pay $2,000 a month.
Thank you for your comment, and thank you for your patience in waiting for the item to come up. Is there anybody else who wants to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I suspect the next item is to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
There's a motion to the second. Crystal, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
All right. So questions for staff? I see, hang on a second. Ron?
Thank you, Mark. I think I have one, first one question for staff, and that is, how much penetration do we have with this 10% discount program? I heard that there's some, but do we know how much it is?
Yeah, I don't really have the exact number, but yeah, it's probably not as much, as many as people, as Alex had alluded to. We probably have a lot more accounts out there that probably could benefit from it, however, they just haven't participated. I could, I could actually research that a little bit more and probably get that information to you of what we have today.
Yeah, I was almost rhetorical. I didn't really expect you to know. I mean, how do you know how much people make? But I was wondering, for starters, maybe you could write all the people who wrote protest letters and ask them if they qualify, if they're not already receiving a discount. I mean, I really feel for those people, but when you look at the numbers and you look at what our debt service is, you know, we're left with very few options, and they're, they're all, you know, I don't want to say bad, but we really don't have a lot of wiggle room. Okay, so the other question, was it Alex?
Yes.
Yeah, Alex. I had, thank you, Steve. So we approved this rate increase. It's a four-year rate increase. Does that mean we don't have this discussion for another four years, because we've just done it for four years?
I think that's a goal, that you don't need to keep coming back and going through the 218 process again. But certainly, if there's some emergency unknown where the rates need to go higher, you know, we don't expect that, you might be back having that discussion again. That's always the case. Or if things are turning out a lot better than anticipated, and someone's granting Silicon Valley Clean Water a $400 million grant, which we don't expect either, you know, it could be possible that you'd have your staff back here saying, things have changed, we don't need to fully implement a 4.5% rate increase in year three, we only need 2%. So there's always a possibility, but the goal is with these multi-year, you kind of look long-term and try to get this process out of the way. You could always implement something lower, but you can't go higher unless you go through the process again.
I doubt that that would be high on the list of a community foundation in grants.
You never know.
That's all I have for the moment.
So a question for Jeff. I think it's for Jeff, anyway. I seem to recall, we on occasion in the quarterly newsletter, have we not mentioned the existence of these two subsidy programs, the one for sewers and the one for recycling garbage?
Yeah, I know we've marketed the programs from time to time, and we can look at continuing to do that.
Yeah, I think, you know, it might be something good to slip in there once a year or something, space being available, just so people are aware of it. Building on the discussion that Ron and Alex just had, I'm in favor of the four-year window that is being proposed here, but I would like to ask that staff review the situation every year, and to the extent that unlikely as it may be that some window opens up where we could lower the rates and not damage the long-term trend that we're basing everything on, I would like to know that, because if we don't have the hearing process, we'll, without doing something on the side, we'll never know.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, we'll be happy to do that. So we reevaluate the sewer rates every year and kind of see where we stand.
That'd be great. Thank you. Any other questions for staff or discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to introduce ordinance number 1547. 1547, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos amending the San Carlos Municipal Code Section 13.08.160 sewer service charges and fees established.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, so we will cycle back and do item 10A, discuss fire station number 16 replacement project, and provide direction to staff on the design and construction.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, City Council members. Steve Machida, Public Affairs Director. So what tonight is, what we like to do, our staff would like to do, is actually discuss Fire Station 13. So we'd like to conduct this study session and actually receive some input from council on the direction that we're moving forward with this project. I do have Chief Pucci available to answer any questions that you may have as part of the presentation itself. So as you can see at the cover, this is the existing Fire Station 16. It's located on Alameda, 1280 Alameda, at the intersection of Howard. So current station basically is a one-story building, was built in 1958, primarily cement plaster. There are four bedrooms there, two apparatus space for the engines, living and day rooms, kitchen and dining area, gym and lobby. The existing structure does not support the current needs. Basically, it's a little too small, as you can imagine. And I have some pictures that actually kind of shows you what the station looks like. But basically, what we found is that station is deteriorating and needs really significant upgrades. Basically, it's not up to building codes or seismic standards. So here's the front lobby, and probably most of you have actually been in the station, but here's the front lobby. Basically, it's just a front desk. And then to the picture on the right, it actually shows a parking area. This is a parking area that we use for the firefighters when they actually are at the station itself. However, I'm also told by the chief that whenever there's a shift change, there's typically three vehicles per shift, and so when there's a shift change, there's actually up to six vehicles kind of parked in the back area, as you see. So it's very limited, very tight. The day room, real basic day room and kitchen. So as you can see, it's probably 1950s or so construction. The dorm rooms, really a basic bedroom, and then they have, do have shared bathrooms, basically. And then here's the fixture for the apparatus space. So there's two bays, as I mentioned earlier. In this case, current standards or current request is usually to actually have a rear entry door where the fire trucks will actually come in and enter from the back. Currently, what they do at this station is basically the firefighters have to jump off this truck as the engine kind of backs up into the apparatus bay. So it does take time, and it does kind of, if you will, require the firefighters to be out in the street, and so to kind of direct the truck back into the bay itself. So what's being proposed, from what we hear from our firefighters, is that the station really kind of maintaining the same two apparatus spaces for the two fire stations. What they'd like to do is actually have at least one drive-through apparatus bay, if not possible. So that's actually having the back and the front door, if you will. And preferable if we could have two, both bays have the back door, if you will. Still continue to have four bedrooms, two office spaces, and then this is actually for their report writing, a gym facility, lobby and reception area, kitchen and dining area, living and day room. And the one area that they really adamant is actually to have the hot and cold zones to minimize the exposures to any other material that they bring back to fire and the carcinogens. So the current budget in 2019, 2020, we basically carried the $300,000 for actually the design. And we will be requesting $600,000 for the design, construction management, and some contingency, although we're not asking for that for tonight. We just kind of want to let you know that in the mid-year budget, we'll be asking for that money. We deferred $207 million on the 20, excuse me, 2019, 2020, and then 2020, 2021, we requested $2 million, but we deferred $1 million of the $2 million. And then in 2021, 22, we requested $5 millions, of which the 3.7 million, which was deferred, will be kind of rolled into that year. And then in fiscal year 2022, '23, we requested another $5 million for a total of $11.3 million. Our original estimates of $11 million for this fire station that we're proposing, we really felt that that was probably an adequate number, or actually a number that is doable. However, we also believe that over time, just because of the material and some of the costs in the Bay Area, that it rises, this cost could rise approximately 6% each year, and as I mentioned, more so of material costs. And then as we probably recently heard with the tariffs on some of the foreign trade or foreign products that we have, we haven't really analyzed that just yet. However, we also believe that that will actually affect the price of the project itself as well. So in the fall of 2018, we actually went through an RFQ for several architects. What we learned is, you know, this is a very specialty design, and so we really had to actually have an architect kind of who had gone through this process before and kind of shepherd us through the process. So we see proposals from five architectural firms, and actually their estimates to do the work, the design work, kind of varied between 600 and 800,000. So obviously, that is a little bit shy of the 300,000 that we actually had in this current, this year. And so as I mentioned earlier, we will be requesting an additional 600,000 in 2019 and 2020, designed for a construction management base in their RFQ for contingency. Basically, as I mentioned, this will be done in the mid-year budget request. So some of the options available is what we're, we wanted to find out from council if we're on the right track, or if council wanted us to move the project either forward, or perhaps if we need to stretch it out a little bit longer. If there is no change, we will follow kind of the process that we're, that is in our CIP, or if there's another option that the council was just forced to move forward, you know, please provide that direction. But in particular, what we're really looking for is kind of direction from the council on how you wish us to proceed on this fire station itself. As I mentioned, I do have Chief Pucci available to also answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Steve. Questions for, I don't have any public comment cards from anybody. Is there anybody who wants to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Questions? Adam?
Steve, thanks for the presentation. Just two quick questions on this, and then I'm sure there are others that come up. I noticed in the, your list of the proposed station, it doesn't include bathrooms. So is that, are you looking at still one, two? Is there sort of, what's the, I assume there's something on that?
For the proposed stations, each of the dorm room, what we're looking at is each of the dorm room will have its separate bathrooms, actually for the firefighter, and then a common bathroom.
Okay. And can you clarify, we talked, because right now you said you have shared bathrooms, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you're, when you say four bedrooms, there's four separate bedrooms or four beds?
Four separate bedrooms.
Got it. And so what's the overall capacity, then, for that station?
And President Chief, but it's my understanding that we'd have two beds in each bedroom.
And so from, I'm just wondering, from a shift standpoint, how many do you normally have on shift?
So on shift, there's three people. So there would be one in three of the bedrooms, and the fourth one is when we have a cadet or a citizen ride along or something like that, that would occupy that fourth bedroom.
Okay, so then, so it looks like, I'm just confused, because the pictures here look like there's two beds in each room.
Correct.
And you're talking about going to more, a single shifting from...
There would still be two beds, so when one shift goes off, the next shift comes in, and they occupy the other bed.
Kind of rotate through. Got it. Okay. All right. That's all I have? Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Dave, one of the pictures showed, you know, kind of haphazard car parking in the back and all that. A replacement structure, would that have more parking, more outside parking? Aren't you dealing, you're dealing with the same footprint, right?
Correct. So there aren't any good options to say that we can move the station to some other place. We like the response times that exist with this location. It's a good spot for a fire station. One of the just general diagrams one of the architects provided did show that you can fit six cars in the handicap spot there, too, so we can make it work.
And then I assume, I looked at the new amenities that, not amenities, but you know, what it would look like, what the proposed station would look like. I didn't see anything. I assume it's a two-story building?
That's what we're looking at in order to get the square footage. And also, when you start talking about hot, warm, and cold zones, what that means is when we come back from a structure fire, what we'll do is, while we're at the scene, is we'll take off our turnouts and put them in plastic bags and seal them, go back to the station, and actually we have to get somebody in a shower within 60 minutes because of the dermal exposure and the absorption of carcinogens. So some types of cancer, firefighters have a 200 time increase over the general population. And we're finding that we're just exposing ourselves to structure fires over and over again by, you know, when I first were hired, it was a source of pride to have dirty turnouts, and we realized that we were killing ourselves by doing that. So what this accomplishes is you will see station designs that actually include some features, there's positive pressure from the, coming from the living space to keep, we want, the apparatus bay is going to be the dirty part of this station, and nothing that's carcinogenic should be coming into the living area at all. So that's part of the design.
And would you be building, I mean, how many square foot, how many square feet are you just thinking of?
I don't know how many square feet, but the cost, so what we're, what we're looking at in the San Francisco Bay Area is about $1,100 a square foot for the, for the station. That includes the apparatus bay. Some of the, you know, that's one of the big disadvantages of being in the Bay Area. If you, if you were to build the same station in Texas, you're looking about $300 a square foot. So that's part of the problem with the, this would be a small project in comparison to the other construction projects that people are interested in along the Bay Area.
Too bad you don't have more room, because I was reading an article over the weekend about the problems that the Sheriff's Department is having, because so many of their officers live in, you know, East Bay and Central Valley and stuff, and I got this harebrained idea that maybe the Sheriff's Department could contribute to, you know, building a larger building, and, you know, some of their officers could also use those bedrooms.
We've actually offered up that, because usually we'll have, especially at Station 9, we'll have several bedrooms that are open, and we've offered that to our law enforcement partners, that they can use that to rest, especially when they have court in their own graveyard. What we find is they really don't like being in the station, trying to sleep when the alarm's going off, and it, we've been open to it, but it doesn't work very well.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you. So a couple of questions. What's the general timeline of this? So does it follow the financings? So one could assume that the demo would happen around the first tranche of financing after the design work, and then, could you speak to that?
So, so basically, what we were requesting is probably, you know, assuming our schedule holds, as we had in our CIP, basically, what we'd see is probably the demo would actually probably start in 2021, '22.
And then what happens with the current station? Right, we have two fire stations in San Carlos, so we're with...
So we looked at a couple of different options as far as where we're going to put the crew of Station 16. We haven't been able to locate a place that we could put a temporary structure up and run them out there. And when you have a temporary station that ups your cost about 1.4 million a year, so what we're studying right now is response times. If we put two engines at Station 13, 16 would still respond to 16 calls. It's going, it is going to affect response times for the period of construction, but there is also significant savings, and there aren't a lot of options. The same tight spaces that cause the wildland evacuation problems are the same tight spaces don't give us an opportunity to put an engine up there or somewhere else.
Thank you. And then these deferred costs, I'm assuming that's what it was previously budgeted, but now costs have gone up. Is that...
Well, yes. What we decided to do is ask, some of the deferred costs is basically, we just kind of did a little bit of assessment of, you know, how we're going to stage the project itself. So we had, we were able to kind of defer the projects, you know, out to further years.
Sarah, your light was on earlier.
Laura asked my question.
Okay. I'm glad this page is up here, because, Steve, because the one question I had unanswered is, reading between the lines on this, it looks like, like, for example, you have deferred $2.7 million. It looks like at some point, the project was slipped out, what, a year, year and a half? And maybe I'm misreading it, but enlighten me.
Well, I, as I mentioned kind of earlier, that, you know, this is really kind of a specialty design. I think we originally came up with the 300,000, kind of looking at, you know, that would be sufficient to actually do the design of a fire station itself. People on my staff don't have this kind of bill or skill, ability to make that assessment. So I know Chief Pucci actually had attended a design conference, I believe it was last year, and actually, that was enlightening in regards to, you know, as you mentioned, $1,100 per square foot. square foot. Certainly, that's much higher than we ever anticipated that. So as we kind of reassessed the project, we really felt we had, we had to move, you know, some of the costs out, but it's also, we didn't really even have the, any kind of means to pay for or the money available to pay for.
You had to move the project out because the costs had gone up or because you were operating within a budgetary constraint?
Well, I think a little bit of both. I think you have the budgetary constraint, but as well as, you know.
That's fine. By the way, just as an aside, and this may only apply to me, this type of information about the deferrals and stuff might actually show up better in a tabular format, you know, timeline format before and after dollar amounts, because then it's sort of obvious that the dollars moved around, shifted a year, 18 months, whatever. That's just a little bit of presentation feedback. So I guess the question I have is, and this is probably a Dave Pucci question, get to put you right on the spot here, since I presume if the council gave direction, we could say, no, we'd like this fire station rebuilt sooner, okay, than what's currently in this plan or currently before us. What's the risk to not doing it sooner? What's the risk to the community from not doing it sooner?
I don't think there is a risk of not doing it sooner. It would really be a financial question if we were able to do it sooner.
Okay, so, so another, put it another way, you're not, the two of you are not concerned that like this building is close to falling down, it might fall down in eight months or something?
Well, if we were to have an earthquake, it wouldn't do well, and it is a critical city facility. And that's part of the cost of the new station is it's built to current code, stamped with steel and everything like that. We're getting by right now, but it is tight. One of the pictures that we took when we were looking at putting this together was showing the engine has about this much clearance from the header as it backs into the fire station stuff. So, you know, the next, it's definitely due, but I don't see a risk of not doing it sooner.
I'm not disputing that. What I was trying to probe at is, is the end of the presentation staff said, give us direction. And I'm trying to understand what the direction might be, you know, because I presume you guys know how to design fire stations. You don't need me to tell you that you need hot and cold rooms or whatnot, because I would never have thought of that. So the only thing that I saw that was sort of germane to feedback from the DIAS might be the timing of this.
Correct.
And, and I don't have a problem going with the staff recommendation as long as staff is, as long as lurking behind that is not like, gee, we would really rather not push this out. But we're doing that because the numbers you gave us last year don't work. Numbers we gave you last year don't work. And I'm not hearing that in this exchange.
No. And the one thing that we are doing right now is it's kind of a facility that we really don't want to invest money in. So as things are wearing down, we're trying to really minimize that maintenance cost in the station. So it's definitely in a spiral as far as the station goes.
Ron, I see you had another question?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I don't, Steve, Rebecca, or Jeff, I'm not sure who answers this, but it says that we, the design replacement was included in the fiscal year budget and it's been identified. Have we been allocating money in a, what, our capital improvement fund? Is this money that we have, that we have been setting aside?
Yes.
It is, okay. So if we just approve the recommendation as is, you're confident that we'll be able to proceed, we'll have the funds, and we'll get it replaced in the next three years?
Yeah. And tonight's a study session item, so just the opportunity to, yeah, this is a, you know, big ticket item project for us, and we wanted to give the opportunity for the council to sort of take a look at the project independently. And we'll be making some budget recommendations to you as part of the upcoming mid-year budget, mainly around making sure we have enough money to get started on the design, because it's going to take, you know, probably well over a year to get the design and everything ready to be bid out, get a contractor on board and begin to stage the construction. So I think, I think our plan right now is pretty much on track that, and you're sort of, you're not so much saving pennies right now as earmarking pennies that you're going to have in upcoming budgets to be able to pay for the construction when those bills start coming in.
Right. And, and, I mean, look, we know what's happened with design costs and they're just going to do nothing but go up, all right?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further feedback for staff? Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Dave. Before we move on to the next item, given that it's 1017 and we actually have three items plus our wrap-up stuff to do, I would like to see if DIAS would be willing to extend the meeting until 1050.
I'll move you extend the meeting to 1050.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Greg, do we need to do the roll on this or can we just do voice?
This is a voice vote, it's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries. Okay. Thank you. Next item is item 11B, consideration of holding a public hearing and adopting a resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $64 million of solid waste enterprise bonds to refinance outstanding bonds of the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, SBWMA, pursuant to the requirements of the Joint Powers Agreements Law and the SBWMA Joint Powers Agreement, financing the construction of certain improvements to the solid waste management facilities of SBWMA and making certain findings pursuant to the requirements of the Joint Powers Agreement Law, Agreements Law. Steve?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and City Councilmember, Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. Actually, I would like to say that these next two items, 11A, or excuse me, 11B and 11C are actually related and they're, you know, related to the revenue bonds for the South Bay Waste Management Authority. And so tonight, actually, I, we have four individuals making presentation to the City Council. We have Joe Lamarianna, the Executive Director of Rethink Waste, John Mangini, Senior Finance Manager for Rethink Waste, Melissa Schick from KANN Public Finance, and Kevin Sevall from Stradling. And he's our bond counsel. So I'd like to turn it over to Joe for actually introduction.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilpeople.
We're ready for a little trash talking.
Yes, yes. Well, tonight is infrastructure night, apparently, from sewers to fire to garbage. Here we go. So thank you for your time. We have two items before you tonight for your consideration. As Mr. Machida said, item B is the straight-up consideration for refunding the $64 million bonds that we are recommending for replacement of the current $45 million bonds that exist now and to pull some new money out to do some very necessary capital projects. What is motivating us to do this is the markets. The markets are very favorable right now, and it seems like every day they're getting more favorable at the moment. But about a year ago, our board identified this as an opportunity to refund our bonds and save, at this point, about $10 million in financing fees. And as the discussions progressed, we identified several very high priority capital projects that have a certain urgency to them. One of them is market-driven, and that is modernizing the recycling facility to account for some radical changes in the marketplace that occurred last, in the global marketplace for commodities that occurred last year. And then the second part is underwriting a, an exciting organics-to-energy project that we have on the books. That one is legal mandate-driven. So one is mandate and one is, is market-driven. Coincidentally, we've been able to work through the financing package that we have for your consideration tonight, that those two major projects would be funded through this refinance or refunding effort. We're also, we're not finalized with this, but we're working very diligently to get them designated as green bonds. That makes a difference in the marketplace. There are certain funds that do investment that like to place their money in green funds and they have certain requirements to do so. So our board has made that real clear that we want to do that. So with that, we're going out in our April 25th board meeting. Our board approved the plan of finance. That is part of the board packet in front of you tonight. In the interest of time, I'm not going to get into great detail. Our team is here to answer any drill-down questions you may have on that, but we'll let you take a good look and ask the questions. And I can assure you that this item has gotten really intensive review by our finance committee and our board during the last year. We've had quite, quite a lot of discussion on it. So in April, the package was approved. The next step is procedurally, is to go out into the 12-member agencies and present this. Because of the governance documents, we are required to get at least eight I-votes. Currently, we have five. If you were to vote yes tonight, we would have six. We have two more tonight, tomorrow, not tonight. Tomorrow, that would be considered and presumably that might get us to eight. We, with those eight, we would come back at our May board meeting, a week from Thursday, and you would be voting to adopt this. And at that point, our board would then be authorized to go into the marketplace and solicit the bonds about three weeks from now. So that's kind of, that's the big picture. So we're here to, to answer any question. Oh, and the second item that we'll be looking at tonight is a technical requirement that's required by the IRS. It's called a TEFRA hearing, and I'm going to let the bond counsel, part of our team, Kevin Savali, talk about that right now. So Kevin?
May I suggest that since they're two separate items, why don't we have him address and do the next one?
Sure, you bet.
Yeah, please continue.
Yeah. That was, that was the transition into it, so I'm perfectly happy to answer any questions or I'll defer them to the team for real deep dive specifics.
Thank you, Joe. Before we get to two questions, I just want to ask, since we have our representative on the SBWA board here, are there any comments, Adam, that you'd like to, like to make?
No, I mean, we had a good, robust discussion at the April board meeting and I believe the vote was unanimous on this, on the board to move forward with the bonds. So I, you know, I spent some time, we had a robust discussion review, and I would encourage the council to consider approving it.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to give you an opportunity to do that. I don't see questions popping up yet. I actually had one or two, if that's okay. One is just something you said in your, your commentary caught my ear. The organics-to-fuel project is mandated by law? So maybe I misheard, but if it is, what is the mandate?
So let me explain the linkage. There is a new generation of laws, specifically the last and most current one is SB 1383. That law requires that 50% of the material that was previously going to Ox Mountain landfill, they're using 2014 as a baseline for that comparative, by 2022, 50% of that material must be diverted away, organic material. By 2024, 75% of it is. So throughout the state, we are being driven by that mandate and each jurisdiction is looking at what configuration of a program is right for them. So one of the things we looked at, since we own and operate a facility, is how can we take a facility-wide view of this? And this is, this is the interpretation that we're doing. So it's a two-step process. We have a pilot program that has been authorized by the board. It's a $5 million program and three of the $5 million has been funded by a state grant. And on June 4th, the Board of Supervisors of the County San Mateo will be considering authorizing another $1 million to offset the pilot. So by June 4th, hopefully, we have four of the $5 million pilot covered. So we're real excited about that. If the pilot is enacted and fully meets the performance that we were looking for in our pro formas, the board has conceptually approved scaling it up to a full scale-up. So we would be taking components of, of the organic material that we're currently getting through restaurants and the commercial side and components of the garbage, taking them, pulling it together in a mechanized fashion, sorting out the bad stuff, and then creating a slurry that would actually go to, almost like an oatmeal-type paste. It would go to Silicon Valley Clean Water for anaerobic digestion and they would harvest green power out of that. So during the pilot phase, the green power, the green energy that they would harvest would go to power their, their facility. And in the scale-up, it sounds like they're going to have excess capacity. And so with the excess capacity, we'd like to get that biogas back onto the site. And a third future project, not included in the scope of this discussion, but a future project would involve the potential of fueling the recology fleet. So instead of relying on diesel, you'd have cleaner burning fuel, wouldn't have to rely on the worldwide OPEC-type pricing scenario for, for diesel gas, and we'd be very self-sufficient. And we think it's a great story that the material right here in our community that's generated would actually go back into the trucks and fuel them. And recology has about 140 trucks every day throughout the entire service area. So it's quite a lot of activity out there and would really help each member agency in meeting their greenhouse gas emissions goals in their climate action plans.
Thank you. Since I've sort of taken the floor here, I'm going to continue with the other question I had. Ron, I'll give you your shot in a second. The, from sort of the 50,000-foot view, when I read the, read the material about the refinancing, which in general sounds like a very good idea, it basically, refinance creates the opportunity to issue enough new bonds to fund things that would otherwise have to be paid for in a different way.
That is correct.
Was there discussion given to, at the board level to basically, perhaps by foregoing some of the projects, okay, to basically provide what would amount to the basis for a rate reduction? In other words, simply lower the cost of, of the operations?
That's actually a very reasonable question. We actually had that very in-depth conversation at the finance committee level. The finance committee looked at it long and hard and they saw an opportunity to, to borrow cheap money to finance projects that we felt were priority projects here. So their recommendation to the board at that time, obviously with staff support, was to package the entire bundle together. So while it was mentioned and discussed in a brief sense at the board level, I don't want to misrepresent it, it was really fundamentally evaluated at the finance committee level.
As I said, personally, in this particular case, I don't, I don't have an objection to what happened, but I guess I would point out that one of the risks that all of us on serving on public agencies have to deal with is there is a prevalent belief out in the public that, you know, it's kind of like, once they start giving, taxes never go down. Once they start giving money to the government, it always stays away, okay? And so by mating these multiple decisions together, you sort of perpetuated that for good reason, okay? I just would ask you perhaps to communicate back to the board or Adam to communicate back to the board that personally, that's a dimension of this discussion that ought to get more thorough discussion if that kind of opportunity presents itself again in the future.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I also, if I could, just interject. I think the board really saw this very unique alignment of sort of the financing gods, you know, and the rates being in alignment with what these, these needs were. It would be wrong to assume that we sort of fabricated the needs to, to tuck into the financing opportunity. That is not, that is clearly not the case.
I was not, I did not mean to even imply that, but, but nonetheless, it's kind of like, you could imagine a different world where the market, the financial market environment was such that you couldn't do the refinancing, you still had to fulfill the mandates and what you would be doing instead is coming back to all of the member agencies saying, hey, we need you to kick in some, into a capital program, okay?
Correct.
And, and that's, that would be a separate decision, which in a sense is implicit now in the refinance decision, and that's sort of a little bit of the problem I have with it. As I said, I support it in this case, but I just ask you guys, from my point of view, to be a little bit careful about that in the future.
Completely understood, respectfully so.
Ron?
Thank you, Mark. Really, just one question. And going through this, it said 2019 bonds will be structured to achieve minimal annual rate payer impact in the, in the current tip fee rates.
Yes.
What is that minimal rate payer?
So right now, our debt service is $4.1 million a year. The plan of finance package that the board approved was not to exceed $4.3 million a year for the duration of the term. And thank you for queuing that up, because I forgot to mention that we are able to move forward with this with either zero or very, very minimal rate payer impact on this. So it's.
When I get my bill, it's not up significantly.
There may be other factors that contributed to being adjusted, and in the next two years, there probably will be. So that's why we're actually really thrilled about this alignment of financing rates with our agencies' capital needs.
So this would not be part of that. Whatever rate increase comes, it's not going to be a result of this bond.
So within the next three weeks, with, with your authorization to move forward or you're adopting this, the board presume, our board, SBWA board, would consider it on May 23rd, a week from Thursday, and that would then be the, the green light to go into the marketplace. And within about three weeks after that, we lock into the rates of what it is then. And right now, they've been slightly trending down because some of this international discussion going on in the trade, international trade. In this particular. In this particular case, that works in our favor, and then that would lock in perhaps an even more favorable set of finances here.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you bet.
All right, so this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing and see whether or not there are any members of the public that wish to address the council on this matter. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion, or if not, I will entertain a motion on the item itself. Well, I think we're, we're doing the two, we're doing 11B first, remember?
Oh, all right, sorry.
Right.
Don't we have to vote on one at a time?
Yes.
That's exactly what I was stopping from coming up for. I move to adopt, oh, hold on, let me find a paper. This is 11
11B.
Okay. Move to adopt Resolution 2019 dash
34.
34?
Yes.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing issuance of up to $64 million of solid waste enterprise bonds to refinance outstanding bonds of the South Bayside Waste Management Authority pursuant to the requirements of the Joint Powers Agreement Law and the SBWMA Joint Powers Agreement, financing the construction of certain improvements to the solid waste management facilities of SBWMA, and making certain findings pursuant to the requirements of the Joint Powers Agreement Law.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
The motion passes. We will now move on to 11C, consideration of holding a public hearing pursuant to the requirements under the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, TEFRA, and Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, and adopting a resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $64 million of solid waste enterprise bonds to refinance outstanding bonds of the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, and to finance the construction of certain improvements to the solid waste management facilities of the South Bayside Waste Management Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is quite a mouthful. If I, if I could introduce part of our finance team, the bond counsel, Mr. Kevin Savali. Kevin?
This is a, one of the reasons you're achieving the savings is because the bonds will be issued as tax-exempt. This is a particular category of tax-exempt bonds, because there's a lot of private involvement. You have private operators of the facility, and private haulers are using the facility. And because of that, that's what's driving this particular need. Normally, when you just do a tax-exempt financing, there's no need for a hearing of this type, but because of the particular type. So that's all, it is very similar to the JPA approval in the sense of just as the host community, the tax law requires your approval to utilize that particular type of tax-exempt financing.
Thank you. Any questions from the, from the dais? If not, this also is a public hearing, so I open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
All right. If there is, if there's discussion or questions from the dais, let's do that. If not, I will entertain a motion.
On a roll.
All right. Move to adopt Resolution 2019 dash
35.
35. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing the issuance of up to $64 million of solid waste enterprise bonds to refinance outstanding bonds of the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, and to finance the construction of certain improvements to the solid waste management facilities of the South Bayside Waste Management Authority.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Any further discussion or commentary? Hearing none. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Obert?
Yes. I think it's the most times I've asked you to call the roll in five minutes ever. So, all right, that completes 11C, so now we will go back to the item that I had asked to be removed from the consent calendar, which is Item 8I, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year agreement with the option to renew for an additional two five-year extensions with Wells Fargo for commercial banking services. There may not, Jeff, is there a staff presentation? I have a couple of slides to present, just to get into that, which I'm happy to do.
Yeah, as this was a consent calendar item, there is no formal staff presentation, but we'd be, be happy to answer any of the questions you have.
We already extended the meeting to 10:50.
Okay.
We'll, we'll make it, I think. So Crystal, yes, if you could fire that up. The reason I asked to have this item pulled from the consent calendar and, oh, remote control, thank you. And I'll just be very quick here. I am concerned about us re-authorizing a relationship, extending a relationship with Wells Fargo, given the bank's really, as you can see, are monumentally bad behavior over the last few years. The, just to start off with, here's a handful of quotes that I just dug up on the internet about what they did. I think everybody knows about the millions of fake accounts that were opened without customer knowledge. They've had to pay $4 billion in settlements and fines. An intriguing thing that I did not know about is, in a couple of articles, they talked about how much of this is stemming from problems that came to light following that sale scandal about the fake accounts. And on top of that, various parties have noticed that problems have emerged in nearly every major business in the bank. This is a relatively systemic problem in their organization, which I do believe they are on the way to fixing, but it was not a sort of casual event that just had a small footprint, it had a very large footprint. And, you know, a little bit of lightness here, bottom right-hand corner, they even extended to the point where they were selling fraudulent pet insurance to some of their customers. I mean, that, to me, is a sign of how deep that kind of bad behavior was ingrained into the bank, that they were even getting down to that level. So, now, the recommendation from staff did follow our normal RFP rules, but there were a couple of things that I noticed in talking to staff about this before tonight that I want to make sure everybody's aware of. There are some, what I think of as process limitations in the review process. One thing is, we require bidders to essentially be plug-compatible with existing processes. So for example, we had a requirement to have a local branch in order to handle cash deposits, which we do have cash deposits. There are other ways, not necessarily as inexpensive, but there are other ways that that type of issue could have been addressed if we were willing to change some of our processes, and perhaps, as I said, we might have to spend a little bit more money. But because we required that plug compatibility, there was at least one bank that kind of got knocked out of consideration that might otherwise have been a valid choice. So to me, one of the questions is, in something like this, why shouldn't we consider making alternative processes? Why are we always stuck with saying, well, we, whatever we get, we want to plug in exactly what's there? And that's particularly true, given the other factors at play here, which are that we really didn't have a way of incorporating organizational legal and regulatory lapses. In other words, there wasn't a down check for saying, gee, your bank has committed all sorts of terrible acts in the last few years, maybe you ought not to be somebody working with a public agency. So what I'd like to propose, and I've talked to Greg Rubens about this, and that's why it's set up this way, I'd like to propose that we actually reject all the bids, which will ironically keep us doing business with Wells Fargo, because that's who our current provider is. I would then like to ask that we agendize at some future meeting a discussion about revising our RFP process, so that we would include what I'm calling reputational factors. And I wouldn't make it casual representation, I'd, I'd make it like you agreed that you were subject to fines by some state agency or federal agency, and that we would require evaluation of what, what it would take to make a bid work. In other words, not just say, well, you don't quite correspond to exactly our processes, so therefore you're out. It's kind of like, well, you're not as attractive, because we'd have to change our processes, but here's what those changes would be, and let the council decide whether or not those changes were worthwhile. And then after that, I would ask that we redo the banking services RFP. So with that, any discussion, commentary, motions people want to make?
I have a question. I don't even know if I can ask this question. In other words, what does that involve? I mean, do we need to agendize that, this item, for me to ask you, what does this involve? I mean, it's
I'm sorry, what is what involve?
Well, in other words, going back for an RFP, just, you know, redoing this whole process.
It would involve agendizing a discussion for the council to go through the existing RFP and provide specific feedback to the council, and ultimately approving an RFP that we would then issue, would go through the normal RFP process. Once it was out the door, staff would evaluate it and present our recommendation to council as we have done today. You know, and, you know, this is an unusual item. It came at the request of the council, that's why it's before you, that's why we brought it back. It's well within our signing authority, and typically, this type of item would be handled administratively, but as I said, this request had come from the council to go through an RFP process, so we, we felt we needed to bring it back to the, the council for action.
If I may jump in, just because I ran through a lot of stuff really quickly. The only thing that I'm asking that we do tonight, which we are allowed to do, the agenda item is set up this way, is we simply reject all the bids, which basically says, which we have done in other cases, you may remember with the, the St. Francis speed humps. They were so expensive, we just said, we're rejecting all the bids, we'll go out again later. So that's the specific thing that I'm asking for tonight.
Well, let me ask you, is this about, more about saving money, or about punishing Wells Fargo, or making a statement?
I, I don't necessarily, I'm not sure how I can fall into one of those categories, Ron. Here's how I feel. Given the magnitude of what they did as an organization, and given how widespread it was, okay, I was the one who brought up the issue a year ago, a year and a half ago, that I'd, you know, I'd like to see an RFP process done on our banking services, because I, at that point, frankly, did not want to be associated with them, okay? To me, as a public agency, we put our imprimatur sort of indirectly on the organizations that we deal with. And, you know, so I'm not really so much interested in punishing them as not in having, in, rather, I'd put it as, I don't want their reputation to sully us, okay? Laura?
Thank you, Chair Obert. Have we had, has, have our accounts been impacted by any of the compliance issues that Wells Fargo has been charged with?
No, we haven't been affected by the larger issues, and most of our services provided at the local branch, we've had a good working relationship with the local branch, and haven't directly been affected. I'm sure there's people in San Carlos who were, but the city accounts were not.
Can I ask, in terms of the process, are there, other options for us on the table that we could reduce the amount of time for this contract and reevaluate then, and sort of do a, two years, and then look at it versus, you know, having a 10-year option? Would that sort of be interesting, interesting to you, Mark?
I'll try, let me briefly answer that, and then Greg can correct whatever I get We can accept staff's recommendation, we can choose to go, I believe we could choose to go with one of the other banks that staff said, no, we don't think it works, although that's the part I'll have to let Greg decide whether we can do that. But we don't have a lot of flexibility in terms of sort of renegotiating stuff, because that's part and parcel of it being an RFP. And that's why, based on my discussions earlier, earlier with Greg, I put it up as, let's just, the simplest thing to do, the cleanest thing to do is we just reject everything, have a discussion of how we would like all of our RFP processes to work, and then go, start over again at some point.
Yeah, I, I think, Mr. Chair, I think the, we would want to, if there are questions about the bid, it's probably staff, maybe Rebecca has some ability to answer some of these questions, but the, I mean, what we have is what Wells Fargo proposed to us, and that includes, you know, the, the rates that they're proposing and everything, but it's probably tied into the terms, so we're hesitant to have you change those, those terms, but I don't know, Rebecca might have some insight into how
Rebecca, as you come up, please feel free to do that. I'd like to see if there's an interest in extending the meeting until 5 of 11, or if somebody wants to just act on it.
I was just going to propose that. Extend the meeting to 10:55.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, go.
So the RFP that was issued was issued under these scenarios, that we would do this length of a, of a contract. So that's what the banks responded with. And just as a, as a little background, the RFP was developed and reviewed with our financial advisor. We spent about two months putting the RFP together. It was issued in, the RFP was issued in February. It went out to a number of banks directly. We received five responses. Three of them were from San Carlos. And due to, one of the banks couldn't offer what we were looking for, so that left us with two. Doing, we did interviews, we had a panel of internal and external panelists to review, so we wanted to have some outside guidance as well. And that's how we narrowed it down to Wells Fargo.
And, you know, the, the only comment that I would make, or sort of repeat that I made earlier but may have, may have passed by, is there might have been other options available if we had, if we were willing to entertain changes to some of our processes. Specifically, the example I used was cash collections. We do collect a little bit of cash, which, which it is convenient to be able to walk down to the bank and not hire an armored car to, to take over. I don't want to minimize that, that's a legitimate business issue. But I believe there, there could be ways of eliminating that, restructuring things so that we don't have that need anymore. And that type of flexibility, in other words, not just saying the bank needs to plug in exactly with what we've got, but that if we made some changes, we could pick another bank, that's part of what I was saying. I personally would revise our RFP process for. I don't want to try and cut off discussion here, but in the interest of not having to extend the meeting yet again, you know, I think it's, I hope it's reasonably clear at this point what my concerns are. You know, it's up to the majority of the council what it wants to do. So as I said, if somebody wants to, you know, but if it'd make it easier, I'll make the motion to reject all the bids, and we'll see if there's a second. So I move that we reject all the bids. And there is no second, so I will see if there are any other motions.
I will move that we approve item, what is it on the consent?
8I.
8I.
I think we have to read it, probably.
Oh, all right, hang on. Let me get to it.
Here.
Move to adopt Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year agreement with an option to renew for an additional two, five-year extensions with Wells Fargo for commercial banking services.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion or comment? Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. That brings us to Item 12, 12A, reflections and agenda setting. Any comments that people would like to make? I had, I had two just brief ones. One is, I do hope that relatively soon, we will have some discussion on the dais about sort of our timetable and a plan of action of what we want to do on housing. I was thinking a lot about the housing discussion we had the last couple of meetings, and I think we did some really great work. I think we I think we handed out some significant assignments to the Housing Subcommittee, but I'm unclear about when that's all coming back. And so I'm a little concerned about momentum being lost, basically. So that's something I'll probably bring up again at the next meeting. The other comment I was going to make is we do have a bunch of budget hearings or a budget hearing coming up. Jeff has already warned me that for a whole bunch of perfectly valid reasons, there are requests for additional resources coming through. And it occurred to me over the weekend, Jeff, as I was thinking about that, I do hope that part of the staff budget presentation will be, in some fashion, some insight into the cost of existing programs we have that we may wish to either cut or defer or reduce. In other words, not necessarily a purely zero-sum kind of budget, but I personally would prefer that we not just be in the mode of, well, all we're looking at doing is adding. Because I think if all we're looking at doing is adding, we could very quickly end up spending an awful lot of money. And striking a balance there is something we have to have the ability to do, even if we don't choose to do it.
Well, the next item is a budget study session, so I think we'd be looking for that kind of direction. We won't be coming in with a complete overview of the budget. This is actually a lot more than we normally do in the off-cycle, so getting that feedback now from a council member is important, but we'll need to get that feedback from the council at the budget study session so that what we could prepare presumably then for adoption would be two packages, you know, additions plus subtractions to...
Sure. Right. I was mostly just reacting to your comment that it was sort of unprecedented, the level of increases that were coming through. And I haven't seen any of them yet, so. Adam, you look like...
Just add, I like the idea of looking at both sides of the ledger, so that's it.
All right. Well, there, I saw Ron nod his head too. I didn't look down this way, so maybe there are other heads nodded there too. Any other comments from the dais? If not, Jeff?
Nothing from staff.
All right, then I believe we can continue our track record and adjourn the meeting early.